All right, we're gonna go ahead and take roll call then get started. She can join us shortly, hopefully.
Okay, Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Suffertin.
Yep, Alderman Suffertin.
Here.
Alderman Revelle.
Here.
And Alderman Rainey.
Here.
All right, thank you, thank you, City Clerk. We have a quorum with our City Council. Alderman Fisk, I expect to join us via the phone. She was having trouble with her video today. So I will ask Luke if we can just let folks know when Alderman Fisk has joined us. That would be helpful.
Sure.
You could text me and then I'll let, I'll let folks know. All right, with that, I'm gonna ask if Alderman Wilson would move a motion so we can meet virtually this evening?
I move that we suspend the rules to allow us to conduct the meeting utilizing the Zoom video conference software in lieu of an in-person meeting and in conformance with the governor's prior directives relating to the COVID-19 pandemic.
Just a second.
Second.
All right, seeing no discussion, City Clerk, could you take the roll keys on that motion?
Yes, Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk. I'm sorry, Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Suffertin.
Aye.
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
And Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
All right, so the nine to zero vote, excuse me, eight to zero vote, the Evanston City Council approved the motion to be virtually, and that is due to the fact that we're still in a pandemic. So welcome, everybody, to the Monday, March 8th, 2021 Evanston City Council meeting. There was one committee meeting beforehand this evening, and that was Administration and Public Works.
Mayor Hagerty, sorry, you're having a, I don't, I don't think I'm the only one, you're, you're having an audio issue.
Oh, can't hear me? All right. Let me do what I did last time. I'm gonna log off and I'll log back on in a second. Okay, I'm back. Let me know if this sounds better for people. Thumbs up, everybody. It looks like it sounds better. So thank you, thank you, Clerk Reed, for that. So welcome, everybody, to the Monday, March 8th, 2021 Evanston City Council. We have all of our aldermen here. We're waiting, except for Judy Fisk, who will be joining us shortly via the phone. I had a couple announcements upfront, under mayor announcements. The first one is the importance of preventative care, even more important at a time when we're in a pandemic and a lot of people are more reluctant, perhaps, to see the doctor. Every year, Matt Rogers, a cancer survivor, lives in the 8th Ward, asked for a few minutes to speak to our, to the Evanston public about the importance of Colorectal Cancer Awareness Month. So I'm pleased to have Matt with us again this year. So Matt, I'm gonna turn the floor over to you. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Hagerty, for giving me a few moments to speak. I was diagnosed in 2018 with stage 3B colorectal cancer. I had a 2.7-inch tumor in my lower colon. I underwent a regime, a regimen of chemo, radiation treatment, and surgery, and luckily, today, I have no signs of the disease and have a very strong likelihood of it not recurring. A colonoscopy saved my life, and I'm here to encourage other people to get their colonoscopies. As the mayor mentioned, March is Colorectal Cancer Awareness Month, and this year alone, almost 150,000 Americans will be diagnosed with colorectal cancer, and 53,000 people will die from the cancer. It is the third most commonly diagnosed cancer among men and women in the United States, and the second leading cause of cancer death in men and women combined. The lifetime risk for men is 1 in 23, for women, 1 in 25. The big problem is that we're seeing a change now where people under five, under 55, are seeing the largest increases, and persons of color have the highest incident and mortality rate. So what I'm asking everyone to do is to talk to their medical provider about getting a colonoscopy or having some other screening done. In 2018, only about 31% of Americans were not up to date on their screening, and 21 million people have never, ever had a colon screening. The symptoms of colorectal cancer can be something like blood in stool, abdominal pain, unexplained weight loss, or the worst part is, sometimes there are no symptoms at all, which was my case. With expanded screening options, homes, at-home stool tests, colonoscopies, this cancer is very easy to beat when it is caught early. So I'm encouraging everyone who's over the age of 45 to talk to their medical providers, obviously with your family history and your own condition, your own medical conditions. That may affect what your doctor wants to do, but do have that discussion with them. And I encourage everyone to get your rear-end gear and get your colonoscopies. So thank you, Mayor, once again. I know you got yours, and I've had several people tell me that they have gotten theirs, so I feel that maybe I'm doing something here.
You're dying. Thank you, Matt, for, for coming and sharing this important public service announcement. Again, yes, I sat through two years of it after I turned 50, and every time I said, man, that's right, I gotta go get a colonoscopy, and I kept putting it off until, until just recently. And, and I, I thought as I went in for it, how mad I would be at myself if something was detected, and I didn't do this when they told you to at the age of 50, and I believe for some people, it's the age of 45 now.
Forty, 45 is what they're recommending for people now, and people who have a history of it in their family, they actually say 10 years prior to the diagnosis of that family member. So if someone's diagnosed at 45, they want you to start at 35.
Wow, wow. So thank, thank, thank you for that. Get your colonoscopies, get your other screening, everybody, for, for whatever it is. Don't put it off just because we're in a pandemic. Second topic I wanted to, to talk about is good news today, which was Morty Shapiro, the president of Northwestern University, and I announced the allocation of the $1 million Good Neighbor Fund, which for 2021 has been focused in the area of racial equity. And so this afternoon, a release went out on that, and I wanted to share with everyone how this million dollars is being allocated. Still a lot of work to do to create and stand up some of these programs, but we have put $400,000 into a minority business incubator. That funding will support a collaboration between the City of Evanston, Northwestern, and various Evanston business associations to provide minority entrepreneurs with access to programming and networking and capital. We set aside $300,000 for a guaranteed income pilot program, also referred to as universal basic income. This pilot program will offer monthly cash payments to low-income Evanston households to supplement the existing safety, a social safety net. Again, a lot of work to be done on both of those programs in terms of stand and standing those up. That'll occur this year. Next is $100,000 that we set aside for operationalizing racial equity within the city of Evanston to, to help us strengthen the equitable delivery of city services to the community. And that's, that's work that our City Manager's Office in Kimberly-Richardson, who we all know is working on and bringing in a university, I believe, that's gonna be helping with that. We set aside $50,000 for building community resilience through the arts. Funding will mobilize artists and cultural and social service organizations to improve the quality of life and amplify voices in underserved communities. We set aside $50,000 for a language access program. This funding will help the city fill language accessibility gaps, provide staff training, and translate vital documents. We can be doing a lot more in that area. I think everybody in the, the council recognizes that, and so that's a start there. We also set aside $50,000 for a older adults pilot program. Funding will support the launch of a new city program providing in-home technology solutions to at-risk older adult populations to reduce isolation and connect with health and wellness programming. And lastly, we put $50,000 into the Community Member Relief Fund. Funding will supplement the city's fund designated for Evanston residents who do not qualify for general assistance or emergency assistance due to their legal status. This fund, as some may recall, was first established by the Evanston City Council in, in late 2020. And so that's, that's the allocation of, of the million dollars. I want to thank Northwestern University for stepping up and investing in Evanston. Our expectation is that that will continue long beyond 2020 and see an increase in that contribution to our great city. Last, on Northwestern, I just want to congratulate Morty Shapiro, who announced last week that he will be retiring at the end of the 2022 school year. So Morty will still be with us for another year and a half while the university does a search and a transition to a new president of Northwestern University. So at, at, at an appropriate time and place, we will celebrate Morty Shapiro and all that he has done to help us as a partner with the city to do a lot of good in this community over the last, over the last 12 years. So that's that. And lastly, real quick COVID update. Our numbers for COVID, let me start there. The numbers for COVID continue to look really good, not only here in Evanston, but across the state and, and across the country. We had only three cases today. Our total case count's a little less than 4,000. It's 3,986. We didn't have any deaths reported today, which is good. We have had 114 total fatalities. Big shout-out to Mary O'Connor, who did the Floral Heart Project on March 1st. You may have seen the, the floral hearts that were around the city. They were at the hospital, they were at Northwestern University, I think some of the schools and, and other locations. We got a lot, we got a lot of positive feedback about that. And it was just one more way to try to help families and friends who have lost ones mourn that loss. Our seven-day positivity rate is now less than 1%. It had jumped up slightly last week, and we talked about that a little, but it's now just below 1%, .98. Our seven-day moving average is seven cases, or, excuse me, nine cases, so really low there. All right, what's really on people's mind isn't the numbers necessarily these days, because again, we're, we've done a good job containing and managing the actual virus. The big question is about vaccinations. I put out a message today to the community, answering a lot of questions that I have received and our aldermen have received recent, recently. In terms of where we are, we have administered as a city more than 9,400 vaccine doses, and that's from Evanston's Public Health Department. 7,000 additional doses have gone to our local hospitals from our allocation for them to, to vaccinate their, their staff and healthcare workers. We do have, now have an interactive vaccination dashboard. If you go to citiovevinston.org/vaccines, you can find the dashboard. There's still a lot of data analytics that we hope to do as we get more information. One of the big gaps that we have here is we, people will say, well, how many people in Evanston have been vaccinated? And the reality is, we don't know right now exactly how many. We can tell you how many we've done in our points of distribution, but there are many people in Evanston who have been vaccinated through the Walgreens or the CVS program or some of these other sites that are, that are around. And so we hope in a few weeks that we will actually get access to that data through the state. It is maintained. It's just a matter of all these different entities providing that. Additionally, our count doesn't include all of the folks in the nursing homes, excuse me, nursing homes, senior living centers, all of that who have been vax, who have been vaccinated. So if you go to that dashboard and you say, hey, there's only 4,000 here, we've actually vaccinated. There are a lot more than 4,000 people in Evanston that have been vaccinated. Nonetheless, we continue to be challenged with not having nearly enough vaccines. We have, were told in February to expect, you know, to see, you know, some nice increases in the quantities of vaccines come March. We're now in March. We haven't seen that. Over the next three-week period, and I put this out in the, what I sent to everybody, our projected vaccines for Evanston over the next three weeks is 1,200, this is per week, 1,200, 1,400, and then 1,200. I can tell you that I, all of our elected leaders, our state reps and others, have been working the phones, email with the state to say, this isn't, you know, nearly enough for us to get the job done. We read about increases that are going on around the country, and even in our state, and we're not seeing that. One of the, my frustrations is that we are not fully utilizing our healthcare infrastructure that we have in place, which is our, fully utilizing our Public Health Department and all the vaccinations we can do, the vaccinations our hospitals can do, Erie Health Clinic can do. We feel confident that we could do over 10,000 vaccinations a week if we had the vaccines. The approach that's being taken at the federal level and at the state levels to set up mass vaccination centers, and so those are controlled either by the feds or the state or, or the county. We are working right now to try and get access for Evanston residents at those mass vaccination facilities at Cook County. Right now, you register for it. If you're an Evanston resident, they say, sorry, you don't get to, you know, register for this event because you have your own certified health department. Well, that would be fine if we had substantial, you know, amounts of vaccine here to, to access people. So we are looking at different options. Lots of people are working on it, but right now, we're in that situation of working with the vaccines that we have. We continue, our philosophy and approach continues to be, to vaccinate those that are most at risk of developing severe complications, and we know the data shows that those are older resident Evanston, Evanston residents. Right now, this week, the Health Department is hoping, I believe, is expecting to get down to 69 years of age. So we have been, you know, going down, down, down. So 69, and that's, and that's where we are there. Lastly, I just want to make note of the United Center. There's been a lot of press about the United Center. The United Center was a, is a federal mass vaccination center that was set up. It started last week. Evans, I encouraged, other people have been encouraging Evanston residents, if we don't have the vaccines, please register with, you know, the United Center Mass Vaccination Center with CVS or Walgreens, if you can get in there, wherever you can get in. I know it's inefficient. I know it's time-consuming, but that's the best thing that we can do right now, given our limited vaccines. With the United Center, yesterday, they stopped not only Evanston, but residents from other communities from registering for that event. They seem to be working through new procedures. The concern was that they weren't getting nearly enough people in the city of Chicago who were able to register and get vaccinated, and it was many people from outside. So that they are working through, again, there's a lot in the Tribune, Chicago Business, and others about what's going on with the United Center. We will continue to keep our residents updated through the Thursday e-news, as well as periodic messages from me and, and others in the city. I'm gonna take a rest for a second there. Are there any questions that council members have on vaccinations? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna conclude my remarks and turn this over now to our City Manager for any announcements she has. Erica?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no announcements this evening.
Okay, thank you, Erica. Just FYI, we couldn't hear you that well. It was just really low, at least maybe, I think it was super low for me, and it looks like it was low for others. So just FYI for when you speak again. We're gonna turn it over to the City Clerk for announcements.
Yes, there are a few announcements. I do want to, but we had an election, February 23rd, a primary, and in that race, we elected a new mayor because Daniel Biss received over 50% of the vote. And so the swearing-in, I think, is May 10th, if I'm not mistaken. So we, we've elected a new mayor. Congratulations to Mr. Biss, to future Mayor Biss, Mayor-elect Biss. We have also, in the Clerk's race, two candidates are moving forward in the Clerk's race. That is Stephanie Mendoza, who is on the ballot, as well as Cynthia Beebe, who will now be placed on the ballot. Because, you know, we, there, there was a primary that was triggered by the number of writing candidates, five writing candidates, or I think five filed, but if five candidates filed for one office, it triggers a primary. Since only one appeared on the ballot, the top vote-getting writing candidate, who, who also received over the minimum number of votes that would have been required to have, you know, for signatures on their petition to get on the ballot, which is a little over 1,000 that Miss Beebe received, she'll, she'll have her name placed on the ballot as well, and, you know, the two will face off in April and will elect a new clerk then. Then also, in the 4th and 8th Ward, there were primaries, and those results are available. There are two candidates moving forward in each of those races. We do have an April 6th election that is coming up, and so that will be the consolidated election. Every race, again, except for the mayor's race, will, will appear on that ballot, as well as races that are outside of the purview of the municipality, but also we'll have school board races for District 65 and 202. And South Evanstonians will have Ridgeville on their ballot as well. And so the early voting for that race begins March 22nd. There's been a bit of confusion about different dates that are floating around. March 22nd is the first day of early voting here in Evanston at the Civic Center, which most folks are used to doing. The early voting will start sooner than that. For those who have had the other number, the other date, out the 10th, folks will be able to go downtown to the Cook County Clerk's Office at 69 West Washington. Typically, it happens in the ground floor, Pedway, and vote, but also typically, Evanstonians don't take advantage of that. And then, of course, Election Day will be April 6th. Folks can start requesting mail-in ballots now. They can, they can request a mail-in ballot now, and so we encourage folks to do that, and we're hoping that mail-in ballots will arrive a bit sooner than they did in February, so we'll keep contact with the county clerk's office for updates on that. I think that concludes my announcements.
All right, thank you, thank you, Clerk Reed. We're now gonna move into public comment. We have 30 residents that have signed up for public comment tonight. I do want to make sure everyone is clear. On the agenda tonight is Harley Clark, and I know there's a lot of residents that come out for Harley Clark. I also know there's been a lot of discussion over the last week about reparations. Reparations is not on the City Council agenda tonight. It will be on the agenda on March 22nd, which will be in two weeks when we meet next. Given that we have 30 people and we set aside 45 minutes for public comment, everyone gets 1 minute and 30 seconds tonight, and I will keep track of the time, and when I ask you to stop, if you could just stop, that would be appreciated, and we'll move on to the next speaker. We want to make sure everybody gets their, their fair allotment of a minute, 30 seconds. All right, our first speaker tonight's gonna be Lindsay Wade, then we have Vicki Gaines, and then we have Carolyn Murray. Welcome, Lindsay.
Hi, I don't have any comments for tonight.
Oh, okay, thank you. All right, next up, we got Vicki Gaines. All right, I don't hear Vicki with us. All right, our next one's gonna be Carolyn Murray. Before Carolyn talks, I do want to let everyone know Judy Fisk has joined the meeting via the phone, so Alderman Fisk is with us. Carolyn, welcome. Are you here, Carolyn?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
There you are.
Thank you, Mayor Hagerty. I just wanted to say that I was in support of the Harley Clark initiative as a 5th Ward resident, and I would ask that our council keep the movement and the opening of the House to all of the community members to explore. I just wanted to say that briefly, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Carolyn. All right, next up, we've got Morris Fisher, then Josh Bose-Carlson, then Christine Leon. Are you with us, Morris? Luke, do you see him?
I do not, Mayor.
All right, so we'll, we'll check back. All right, Josh, I know Josh is with us, and then we have Christine Leon, and then Megan Hughes. Welcome, Josh. I saw him earlier. I know he's here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Josh Bose-Carlson. As you mentioned, I'm speaking tonight as president of the Southeast Evanston Association and on behalf of our board members. As you know, as you may know, primary mission of our organization is the protection of the Lakefront for the good of all Evanstonians, unencumbered by private business interests. It's our position that while the proposals you're considering tonight are indeed very thoughtful and creative, the proposal that has been submitted by the Evanston Community Lake House and Gardens, far and away provides the most accessibility to every, everyday Evanstonians. NCLG's proposal is premised on the foundation that Harley Clark remain a public good. Today's vote is a question about equity and access to that good. If indeed the City Council were to use equity as its guiding light in making their choice, we believe that the choice could only be the Evanston Community Lake House and Gardens. Thanks.
Thank, thank you, Josh. Next up, we've got Christine Leon, then Megan Hughes, then Judith Treadway. Do we have Christine with us?
Don't breathe some air.
All right. Megan Hughes, I know I saw her earlier. She was.
Okay. Hi.
Welcome, Meg, welcome, Megan.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, thank you, City Council members, and for the opportunity to comment. Yeah, I, I was very surprised to see this come up at this time with so little notice and really, you know, at sort of at the end of terms, some of your terms, and I don't see why it needs to be, especially, you know, decided for action tonight. You know, this is something that we can certainly spend a little more time on, and, you know, I agree with Josh, you know, I, it's something for the community, and it's, it's, I think the reason that people are, part of the reason that I got so involved in this, well, at least emotionally, was I felt like, you know, we weren't being listened to, and that, you know, it was kind of like, well, you know, we had people that wanted to destroy it, and they came up with the money, and hey, you know, before we know it, the bulldozers are gonna be rolling. I mean, it, it, you know, this whole thing has been, you know, if you, I just feel like if you want, if you want to talk about transparency and equity and everything, you know, it would be good to go out on that kind of note, and I don't think that putting this up for action, you know, the very first item is, is a way to do that. And so respectfully, I conclude my comments. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Megan. Next, we've got Judith Treadway, then Laurie Keenan, then Malika Gardner. Are you with us, Judith?
Don't breathe some air.
Okay, all right, next, Laurie Keenan with us.
All right, yes. Do we get more time now that several of the speakers aren't speaking tonight?
I don't, it, it's virtually impossible for me to recalculate if somebody doesn't show up. I call, at the end, I'll go back to there, so try to stick to a minute 30, please.
Okay, I'd like to ask that even though it's not on tonight's agenda, that you don't move forward with the program that you're calling reparations, and that you instead take the time to hear from the community, which is now extremely engaged in and wanting to have a voice in the discussion. On the subject of Harley Clark, on December 3rd of 2018, in response to an ethics charge, the Ethics Board recommended that Alderman Rainey be prohibited from voting on all matters- be prohibited from voting on all matters related to Harley Clark. Regardless of what other city body accepts or reviews the advisory opinion, it cannot be edited, changed, or reversed. And the board's opinion was final. The ethics ruling was binding. And in fact, it shouldn't have gone to the Rules Committee. I spoke to Nicholas Cummings from your legal department, who I believe was going to reach out to you on this matter. I would ask that if you're going to discuss or vote on Harley Clark, that Alderman Rainey not participate in the discussion or vote on the issue tonight. Importantly, in the review of the various proposals, no citizens were included in the process, even though we were promised that and we were told that that would happen. And it definitely should be important in the discussion, especially since more than 27,000 Evanstonians voted to preserve the House. Like I've often said, where decisions are made before public meetings are had, I've heard that your decision tonight has already been made. But on the proposal that you're about to choose, the rent that was offered literally said the word peppercorn. And the fundraising necessary was $11 million. I'd like to ask you honestly, would you have accepted those terms from Tom Hodgman and his group several years ago? I think not. I ask you to give more time to Harley Clark, that the citizens be involved in the process, and perhaps that the next council is the one to consider moving the project forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we've got Malika Gardner, then Rose Cannon, then Richard Murray.
Hello, everyone. Thank you. I want to start out saying thank you to Alderman Robin Rue Simmons for opening the door to reparations. That was amazing and.
Malika, I'm sorry, I want to stop you just because you're very low. It's very hard to hear you.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me?
I could hear you before. Were other council members, hold for one second, Malika. Everybody else could you hear?
I'm able to hear fine.
People were able to hear, so, all right. Go on, Malika.
Okay, I'll just say it again. Thank you to Alderman Robin Rue Simmons for opening the door to reparations. I don't think anyone could ever take that away from you. And thank you so much for that. This is my first time ever, ever speaking at public comment. And that's how important reparations is to me. When there's too much doubt in an important decision, such as reparations, you have to take your time with it. And I am for you all moving it to the next council to make decisions on this. That survey that went out, people were forced to choose a housing program. On question number 10, you had to choose a housing program. It gave you no other options. You couldn't even complete the survey. So those results that are going to be presented to you on March 22 will be inaccurate. It is not true, it's not community input. It's that survey could have really given you some serious community input. And it was flawed. It was absolutely flawed to force people to choose a housing program. And I've heard the voices of the community. And housing program is not it. The house house improvement, I love it. Going to a bank to approve whether or not I can get reparations, that's a problem. That is not reparations. It's a housing program. So no new surveys went out. I contacted the city. They changed number 10. But how many surveys had already went out? There's just too much doubt. And so please take your time and let the next council look further into this. Thank you.
Thank you, Malika. Next, we've got Rose Cannon, then Richard Murray, then Nick Korzenzowski. Welcome, Rose.
Thank you, Mayor Hagerty. And I thank the city council for listening to me. And and Robin, to you, thank you for creating this program. But it's not reparations on the face of what true reparations are. And I my ask is that is that you you stop or you hold or you halt the processing of this law until the new city council is seated. I want to see reparations in my lifetime. But I want those reparations to be congruent with all the national organizations that state what reparations are. I'm fearful that our community will be hurt, wounded once again by the processing of this housing housing allotment that you that you're that you're calling reparations. Remove the name reparations from this. Wait for the new council to be seated. Let everybody have a time to weigh in on this. The part of reparations is that I get a chance to tell you what repairs me. Your stakeholder authority doesn't give me, tell me what my reparations should be. And and that's what a lot of, and first of all, many people in this community don't even know about the program. I was getting I was getting inquiries, personal inquiries to me on the last day that that the survey was up, which was on March 3. And and I was telling people, they did not know. Because when they first heard it, when they first heard about it, they said, no, it's going to be some mess. And a lot of people turned and went away from it. So it need, there needs to be more community education on what reparations are. We need to hold this vote until the next city council is seated. And thank you.
Thank you, Rose. Next, we've got Richard Murray, then Nick Korzenzowski. And then I didn't have a first or last name, but it looks like Yasmin was the email address. Richard, are you with us? Welcome.
Right here. Thank you. Good evening. I'm Richard Murray, President of the Evanston Conservancy Benefit Corporation, one of the four proposing groups. And first, let me say that when we started looking at this in 2019 and beyond, we talked with folks from all the three groups and with the friends of Harley Clark. And I was impressed by everyone. And I really, I think all the proposals kept merit. I guess, great. Unrelated, I was moving my firm from downtown Chicago here after 20 years down there to our renovated spaces here. So I admit I'm new to Evanston, and I don't really know how things work here. With that in mind, could I offer a comment, a question, and a request? My comment in short form is I'm confused. I don't really understand how these scores were developed, who made them qualifications, whether there was other information we're not seeing that was involved. And I'm sure every proposing group has opinions about the scores. We certainly do. But I mean, this whole process seems a little mysterious and not very logical to me. I feel like I'm missing something. So my question is, for example, our plan needs $1.5 million of fundraising. And I believe Lake House is the same level, $1.5 million. And I'm pretty sure we both did this to make them as practical, realistic, feasible as possible, as well as responding to this council's previous skepticism about any fundraising campaign at higher levels. Yet, the Book House plan needs to fundraise as much as $12 million. And that's a very big number. I mean, it's eight times greater than ours or Lake House. And and I think it's an extremely difficult capital campaign, especially when Evanston has many other important social causes looking for charitable funding. So your staff for financial capability scoring rated the Conservancy and the Lake House as twos out of possible five. Yet, the Book House came up at $12 million with a score of four. I don't follow that. It doesn't seem logical to me. So here's my question, that I suspect is on other people's minds in one form or another. And assuming the scores were not just based on gut feelings, and I don't mean to be rude, but how on earth were these scores created? I just don't understand it. So my request is that I ask that the council would provide more detailed explanation of how the staff did the scoring, including any missing information that we're just not seeing here. And then after, before making any decisions, just provide some time for the interested parties to ask some questions and comments. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. And we'll make sure that that question's asked when we get to the discussion point, okay?
Thank you.
All right, next up, we've got Nick Korzenzowski, then Yasmin, and then Sebastian Knalls. Welcome, Nick.
Hey, Mayor. Hey, everybody. We we've got a lot of great conversations tonight about Harley Clark and about reparations. And I actually want to talk about something that might otherwise fall through the cracks. It's a two on the agenda tonight. It's talking about replacing some laptops for police cruisers that roughly $3,400 a pop over five years, at which point you buy it out for a dollar. That's how those, that's how that financing always shakes out. There's nothing I want to comment about regarding that per se. But the model that's in the packet costs about $2,000, not $3,400. And it's a 2019 chip. It's replacing a model that's got a 2017 chip in it. So you're already saying that two years is longer than we should be running with these things. And you want to buy these for five and then purchase them afterwards. You're you're planning on buying garbage. It doesn't make sense to me, especially when there's about a $50,000 hole in the price upfront. On top of that, according to the packet, this all shakes out to because we can't get the GPS on the laptop to communicate properly on Windows 10. And so we can't track the cruisers properly. And so we have to get a new machine. No tech professional in the world is going to tell you there's such a thing as $135,000 software driver for a GPS antenna. That's not how tech works. So this seems like a really good place to shore up 50 grand or 10% of the tax hike we just all got passed. It seems like the sort of thing that either the packet's incomplete, and so you shouldn't put it to action tonight, or maybe just vote no on it outright. That's all I've got for you guys. Thank you tonight.
Thank you, Nick. Next, do we have Yasmin with us? Again, I couldn't, there wasn't a first and a second name, but the email was Yasmin. All right. How about Sebastian Knalls? And then after Sebastian will be Jen Shader, and then John B. Kennedy.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Hagerty. Thank you, city council, for giving us all the chance to speak tonight. My name is Sebastian Knalls. I live in the Ninth Ward. And I'm one of the one of the organizers for Evanston Rejects Races Reparations. I know that's not on the agenda tonight, but I just wanted to talk about it a little bit tonight before the vote will most likely take place on March 22. I first want to say thank you to Robin Rue Simmons, any of the other creators and organizers for the reparations program. I think it's essential to the national discussion, as well as the discussion here in Evanston, talking about equity and solving some of the problems that have faced the black community over Evanston's existence. The current iteration of the plan is not following the national guidelines of what reparations are. And we've seen significant community kickback since this has been brought to light. We are not just a small disgruntled group of individuals. We are individuals who have done the work and done the research on this topic and have discussed numerous times what reparations look like and what actions should be taken going forward. So I'm here today to ask the city council to consider at the next meeting to either pause the vote as as most of the of the candidates that are running for office currently believe that this should be put off into the next city council in May is sworn into office, or just change the name of the current iteration of the plan from reparations to some social housing equity program going forward. I think those are the most appropriate courses of action. And I think it'll be most beneficial to Evanston residents overall. Thank you so much for giving me the time to talk. Thank you.
Thank you, Sebastian, and thank you for for running for office recently. Let's see, we've got Jen Shader, and then John B. Kennedy, and then Linda Del Bosque.
Good evening, City Manager Storey, City Clerk Alderman, and Mayor Hagerty. Hello, Evanstonians. Jennifer Shader, on behalf of Friends of Harley Clark. We are so grateful that you're moving forward this evening and ask that you continue to do so with a lens toward equity, transparency, and true fiscal responsibility. In light of the rumors that have floated today and the recent release of a staff evaluation, we ask that the data and the process, the anonymous individualized assessments following on Rick Murray's comments be made public. Additionally, we'd ask that you please please provide the additional data regarding the number of staff that evaluated, their familiarity with the process, the House, what percentage live in Evanston. We'd like to know what items the staff used to evaluate. Did they read each printed proposal as it was received by City of Evanston or just see the electronic copies? Did they watch all of the presentations? And were they given the opportunity to ask questions of the presenters before making their evaluations? Additionally, two years ago this March, Dawn made a motion, which was which was passed. And it specifically said that the public was to be included in the evaluation of the proposals. As far as I know, no one from the general public was included. So I ask that you review that. As importantly, and probably on a more positive note, I'd like to reiterate, by the way, both of these were sent via email to all of the Aldermen, the city manager, and the mayor today. I'd like to reiterate the offer that we initially made to the City of Evanston over six months, about six months ago, for $38,500 in funds, including in-kind donation from Bully Andrews Masonry Restoration, which is the historic division of Bully and Andrews. And that covers the Phase One masonry repairs at Harley Clark, which include the Southern balustrade, which someone has done a nonhistoric preservation repair of currently. It also includes the entry door headstone, includes the supervision labor equipment, material, and insurance to cover that. And Bama is the leader in historic renovation in Chicago. It also includes the professional removal of the vines. And lastly, a licensed professional to identify and repair the plumbing issues in the basement. So I just would like to reiterate that offer. It's been over six months. And certainly, I know that if someone offered me nearly $40,000 of work on my house with no strings attached, I would offer it in a, or I would accept it in a minute. So that's all. I wish you well on your discussion tonight. And I plead with you that if the rumors are true, that a discussion has been predetermined, a recipient has been predetermined, that you guys check that at the door and perhaps rethink that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jen. All right, we've got John Kennedy next, then Linda Del Bosque, then Matt Rogers. Welcome, John.
Thank you, Mayor Hagerty. And thank you, Evanstonians, for your time on this. We've all heard Harley Clark too much over the last several years. I am a member of the Evanston Lake and Gardens Committee. To be honest, we were stunned at the scores received from staff. For example, receiving a score of two for community benefit, when our entire proposal was not only sourced by the community through public meetings, but is focused on the Evanston community. In particular, our proposal received a 1.8 score out of five for financial capability. Yet, we had a range for a $1.5 million loan, sufficient for Phase One renovations, right out of the chute. We detailed a sustainable business plan that could support our community-focused programs and maintain the building as well. And as our ability to raise funds over the long term, as as was said earlier, you know, Phase One is just a start. We commissioned a survey of potential donors and identified over $6 million, sufficient for all four phases of the renovation plan. We presented concrete plans on how to address all these issues. So why did we receive such a low score of 1.8? Did the staff reach out to us to clarify any of these key elements before taking a decision? No. Did the staff invite any group, any of the proposals, to answer questions? Which, by the way, is normal common practice for RFPs of this nature? No. Was there even an inclusion, as Jen was just saying, of a public person in this review process? Again, no. Another oddity of this report, when the agenda was first released on Thursday, the staff included two pages summarizing each of the proposals response for the six criteria. We thought it quite odd that the section covering our financial capability was blank, as you can see here. Besides the fact that the inclusion of this summary page might help the council understand what's behind each proposal score, what is disturbing is that the pages were mysteriously removed after the error was pointed out to staff. Given these findings, I believe the score, the scoring and the review process conducted by staff was flawed and should be rejected by the council. This decision should be put off so the new council can have a say in this matter. After all, it's the new council that will have to negotiate a lease. And it's the new council that will have to oversee the progress of the decision. Final point.
John, we're way over our minute 30.
Good enough. Thanks.
Thank you, thank you. Next up, we've got Linda Del Bosque, Matt Rogers, then Robbie Marcus.
Hi, good evening. Could you hear me? Okay, great.
Welcome, Linda. Yep.
Welcome. All right, thank you. March 8 is International Women's Day. Choose to Challenge is this year's theme. to Challenge is this year's theme. Challenge comes from change and driven leadership. As publisher of Evanston Women Magazine, I like to honor the women in Evanston, entrepreneurs, leaders, or, uh, leaders of organizations and educators who have made our community a place to live, raise their family and retire. As President of Latinx Business Alliance, I look forward to working towards a space to provide resources for minority companies to grow and network and learn about opportunities to sustain their business. And so thank you, Mayor Hagerty, for providing a space for the incubator for minority small businesses. And I look forward in helping and assisting in efforts behind the incubator for our community businesses. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Linda. And I really appreciate you mentioning, uh, International Women's Day. Uh, and, uh, I had meant, I'd forgotten, I'm, when meant to announce it during, uh, mayor announcements, uh, there is a website that, um, uh, I think our SSAs have put together for anyone to go to. It's called keepevanstonawesome.com. And you can see all the women-owned businesses in Evanston at that, at that website. There's quite a, quite a bit. If you're a woman-owned business out there and you're not on that website, please, you know, fill the contact form out or let, let them know or let Annie Cokely know, uh, so we can get your business up there. So thank you, Linda, for, uh, for mentioning that.
Absolutely. Thank you. And I'd like to say thank you to Annie Cokely and, um, everyone behind that that has created such a great list. Thank you.
All right. Uh, Matt Rogers, you're up next, then Robbie Marcus, then Kevin Brown.
Um, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council and city staff. Uh, my name is Matt Rogers. I live at 133 Clyde Avenue and I'm a zoning consultant and former chair of ZBA. Um, I come tonight and supported the change for the zoning ordinance to include the new definition of land use of efficiency homes colloquially referred to as tiny homes. Tiny homes have gained traction over the recent past, and many TV shows are dedicated to their popularity. These residences are an alternative to quote unquote regular-sized homes and are ideal for someone who wants only a small living space, but also would like to have a yard and some separation from their neighbors. This change will allow for development on small and odd-shaped lots that are otherwise challenging to build on. We're talking about very specific types of homes on very specific sites. There's a small number of properties affected. Most of them are in the neighborhood of 2,800 to 3,300 square feet with a 20 to 25 foot lot frontage. Um, some are privately owned and some are owned by the city. Um, this would create a new permitted use in R1 through R6 that would allow a 500 square foot home footprint to be established. Um, the homes would have to be affixed. They could not be motor homes. Building lot coverage and impervious surface remains the same as the underlying district. And we are proposing a 28 foot height, which allows for a usable second space without interference from the slant of the roof. This would also, this also is the current height for accessory structures permitted by ordinance. Um, this permits a home that will be more than, that will be about 14 to 19 feet wide and would help prevent somebody from being able to, uh, would help somebody be able to build something that isn't a shotgun home. Um, and also include a stairway that would lead to the second floor. It's only within the past 30 years that we have established side yard setbacks with a fixed distance. Prior to the 1993 zoning ordinance, it was a percentage, which is why throughout the city, we see so many three foot and three and a half foot setbacks on a 30 or a 30 foot wide lot. Um, and ZBA during my tenure often permitted a second story to be built over an existing non-conforming first floor.
Hey, Matt, Matt, we're, we're, we're getting way past our time. Can you just wrap up quick?
Yep. I'll just wrap it up real quick. Um, basically, uh, these create a, a housing opportunity for people in the, in the, uh, missing middle, um, creating people to be able to buy their own individual home for a $250,000 to $300,000 range that would meet with current amenities and, uh, meet existing code. It's also an excellent opportunity for our high school building projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Next up, we've got, uh, Robinson Marcus, Robbie Marcus, then Kevin Brown, then Mary Rosinski. Welcome, Robbie.
Hi there. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening to members of city council, city staff and residents in attendance. Uh, my name is Robinson Marcus and I'm an employee owner with the Evanston Development Cooperative. Um, I'm also speaking this evening, um, to support the Efficiency Homes Ordinance, item P3. Um, as city staff presented during its update before city council this January, median home price in Evanston was estimated at $450,000 and this number is expected to go up by 9.7% in 2021, according to this presentation. Our city continues to be desirable despite its being landlocked with a finite amount of space. Um, and as a result, housing prices are getting out of hand, especially for low and moderate income people and those looking for affordable homeownership. And, uh, connected with rousing housing costs, we have seen a gradually declining percentage of black residents in Evanston over the last decades. Um, so with this in mind, it's exciting to see our city exploring new ways to activate underutilizing, uh, underutilized, uh, small plots of land rather than continuing to let them, uh, sit vacant. I think based on the data set in this evening's memo, we could open up, um, at least if not more than 35 new opportunities for, uh, the small homes that Mr. Rogers very effectively explained in Evanston. Um, so by passing the amendment before you this evening, I hope Evanston can continue to be a leader towards, um, inclusive and equity-focused zoning policies that address the rising cost of land and housing in high-demand suburbs. Thank you.
Thank, thank, thank you, Robbie. And good job, right at like a minute thirty. Wow. Uh, all right, Kevin Brown is next, uh, Mary Rosinski, then Mike Vasco.
Uh, good evening, Mayor Hagerty, Evanston City Council, City Clerk. Um, I'm here tonight on behalf of Evanston Rejects Racist Reparations. Uh, as others who have spoken have said, I want to, uh, pay homage to, uh, Alderman Robin Ru Simmons for, uh, initiating this, um, after our work with Clerk Reed, uh, and taking it forward and, and to the Evanston City Council for approving the measure. Um, but I am working, uh, with a number of residents who, uh, don't support the current proposal, uh, because we don't believe it is reparations. It is a social equity housing program, very similar to other social equity housing programs across the nation, um, throughout the Midwest and West and, and on the East Coast. Um, there's a program similar to it, actually better than, than the program being offered in Sacramento, California. Um, we also don't believe that people should have to have a good credit score to receive reparations. And I think that's an issue when you're involving a, a home loan program that requires application, um, and interaction with a financial institution. We just don't think it's appropriate, uh, that you should have to have good credit in order to receive reparations. Uh, Mayor Hagerty, Alderman Rainey, Alderman Wilson and Alderman Ru Simmons will not be part of the city council, uh, in May. And so leaving, um, implementation of a flawed proposal to a new city council is just bad public policy. Um, I heard the mention about Harley Clark and, um, leaving, um, programs for a new city council is just bad public policy. Um, there are more substantive ideas to be explored, to design an appropriate program, to develop an authentic reparations program. So we're encouraging you to go back to the drawing board, to start with the truth and reconciliation process, to educate the entire Evanston community regarding the harm that's been committed, and then put together a city commission that brings all of the relevant stakeholders in our community, including Northwestern, the hospitals, the banks, uh, and other private entities that have contributed to the harm so that repair can be made. And then finally, um, please take the time to develop a robust communication strategy to not just solicit, uh, input, but can actively and effectively communicate with our community, interactively. Uh, that's something that shouldn't be that hard to do. And I, I would appreciate if that would happen. I think we could have avoided a lot of bad press as a community if, if that had been in place in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Uh, next up, we've got Mary Rosinski, then Mike Vasco, then Allison Levine. Welcome, Mary.
Hi, thank you very much, everyone. Um, I also, I agree with everything Kevin just said, and I think that probably these two huge issues should be left to the next council because they're the ones who are going to be dealing with it for the next four years. Um, regarding the Harley Clark issue, we have a ward meeting next, on the 11th, I believe, that we all thought was going to be happening to talk about Harley Clark. So I was really surprised when I saw it on the, uh, agenda on Friday. And I don't think my alderperson was aware, as she said, she was a little bit surprised that it was on there. And I'm questioning who's setting, why is staff setting the agendas on issues that are so important and that have been going on for so long and the alderman whose issue, whose ward it's in, isn't aware of it? I mean, I think had there been discussion, then she would have said, but I just told all my people that we're going to have a ward meeting to talk about it. So I'm having a very hard time feeling that, who's running our show? Who's running our city? It's, it's, it's really concerning to me. Um, so to that point, I think we should leave it to the next council. But I think we also promised people, as everyone else said, I think Shader and Lori and Mr. Murray and Megan and Josh, we promised the public that they would be part of it. And they're not. They've been cut off and the numbers are not clear. The reasoning behind it is not clear. And I think there's a lot of questions that need to be answered. So I'd hope in the name of transparency and good government, we'll just put both those things aside for right now and not make a vote on it. Thank you so very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank, thank you, Mary. Uh, next up, we've got Mike Vasco, then Allison Levine, then Carla Sutton.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm gonna go quickly over the two issues everybody else has been talking about, uh, Harley Clark and reparations, either one of which could be discussed in any length, uh, by this council. It shouldn't be postponed in both cases until the next council takes, right, takes their seat. Uh, that makes sense to everybody else. It seems, it makes sense to me. Uh, these are issues they have to deal with, and this council should not try to set their agenda for them. Uh, as far as the scoring goes, I've said this many times before, the city scoring process for RFPs, and I think that's why everybody's confused when you look at the scores, it's a completely subjective process. There's no, um, you know, it's, it can be spun however the staff wants to spin it, uh, based on the way they set things up. So that's a real problem and it's reflected in how the scores for these proposals were made. So simply postpone and table the Harley Clark discussion until the next council. I wouldn't even bring the reparations, uh, matter back to council. It should just be tabled until the next council. Um, I have to mention, uh, the first ward meeting last week that I attended, uh, you know, Judy Fiss, um, she, she took the opportunity to avoid answering my questions. Um, I was very, uh, cordial, consistent, persistent with trying to get answers to questions I had raised. Uh, it turned out because of that, she directed staff to, um, you know, take me off the Zoom meeting. I tried several times to get back in, but I was blocked. Uh, I just felt it was a very cowardly thing for Alderman Fiss to do. If she can't answer a question or she doesn't want to answer a question in front of her constituents, she should just say that, that she's ashamed of answering questions, uh, or doesn't want to inform them about things she's done as part of the council. It was just a very cowardly thing to do. Uh, lastly, I, I'd like to thank those who spent a lot of time in the primaries, running for different offices. I specifically want to thank, uh, Lori Keenan, Sebastian Knolls. Uh, they deserved more time than they got, uh, during COVID and during these extreme temperatures that we had in February. You know, they didn't have the deep pockets, uh, to help them, uh, sway the vote. So I wanted to thank them. I also wanted to thank those who ran for city clerk, very robust. I think Diane Goldberg and, uh, Jonathan, uh, for their being the last of two to run for the fourth ward, and for Devon and Matthew running for the eighth ward. I think it's very positive things that are happening in Evanston. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. All right. Next up, we've got Allison Levine, Carla Sutton, then, uh, William Brown.
Hi, everyone. My name is Allison Levine. I'm the founder of One Community Museum, one of the four proposers on the Harley Clark building. Our proposal is to turn Harley Clark into a free museum focused on sustainability. We wanted to share a brief thank you to the council and mayor and appreciation for the opportunity to propose in the building. It's a magnificent property and a wonderful opportunity to develop a space for the community to connect and provide an economic benefit to the city. Since we began the process, our young nonprofit organization has grown so much in our pursuit to promote global citizenship through sustainability education and explore the connection between self, community and nature. I will share a few items to illustrate our deep commitment to our mission and the community. We have developed important community partnerships, including Four Kids Virginia, a nonprofit focused on combating homelessness, and Centerra, a major health care system in Virginia. We opened our first exhibit shop selling products with a purpose from a variety of businesses with a focus on sustaining the environment and the community, as well as locally grown flowers. As our first public installation, we recently were honored to participate in a floral heart project with 14 floral hearts in Norfolk and one floral heart in Evanston in coordination with Mary O'Connor. As you know, the heart memorials provided an opportunity to offer public support for those who have lost someone or experienced a hardship due to COVID. It is only fitting that the memorials were designed with natural elements and our hearts in Norfolk were made of sustainable materials by volunteers consistent with our mission. In Norfolk, we had widespread community support and organized a ceremony in which one of our congresswomen, mayor and several elected officials attended. We also spread awareness about sustainability and raised funds for community, our community initiatives by selling locally grown flowers at the farmers markets, as well as grow your own sprouting seeds, and we will be adding microgreens this season. As we continue to work on additional and more robust exhibits, education and programming, we have been off, offering daily content using our social media platforms, offering tips in health, wellness, gardening, sustainability and mindfulness, encouraging our growing, quickly growing community to make conscious choices and small changes to lead more sustainable lives. Our community is quickly growing and we are reaching tens of thousands of people, not just in Virginia and Illinois, but around the country and world. For anyone who is interested in our mission, just one second, you can find us online at onecommunymuseum.org or at One Community Museum on Facebook and Instagram. Finally, while we did not make our proposal available to the public due to proprietary and confidential details, if the community has any specific questions about our organization, please do not hesitate to email us at onecommunymuseum.com or connect with us via our social media platform. We are so excited to see Evanston's commitment to sustainability and look forward to continued engagement in this wonderful city, Harley Clark or not.
Thank, thank you, Allison, and thank you for all the work you did to, to put your proposal together. Uh, Carla Sutton's next, then Bill Brown, then Chris Kruger.
Good evening, Mayor Hagerty, uh, City Manager Erica Storey and City Clerk Devon Reed and members of the city council. I am here to comment on requesting you to delay action on SB one. I also want to agree completely with the comments previously made by Mr. Kennedy and Ms. Rosinski. I'm also asking that any further deliberations on reparations will be deferred to the next city council after the election in April. No more discussion with this on Harley Clark or reparations till we've installed a new city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Carla. All right. Our next is Bill Brown, who's with us, and then Chris Kruger, and then Sue Lalabac. Welcome, Bill.
Good evening, Mayor Hagerty and city council members and, uh, city staff. I only will reiterate, uh, thoughts by others that shared them with you before. Uh, the rankings are, are very inconsistent as a reflection of the submittals and addendums provided. Uh, I serve on the board of the, uh, Evanston Community Lake House and Garden Group and, uh, was especially concerned about, uh, rankings for public access and for finance, as John Kennedy mentioned. Um, the details, uh, that they offered with the loan and our thrust of public access, uh, all seem to be, uh, um, not reflected in the results. And I think all that spoke about deferring, uh, because it will be a new city council that has to, uh, manage a negotiation of a lease with never, uh, and, uh, see, see through whatever is actually done with the house, that, uh, that a delay would be appropriate, um, respectful of all of you, but, um, much time and energy has been spent by lots of groups on this and due consideration, uh, certainly seems, uh, appropriate. But, uh, o- only second everything else that's been said by, by Mary, by John, by Jennifer, by Richard. Uh, I thank you for your time, your attention and consideration of all of our thoughts, uh, on the subject of Harley Clark and its future. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Uh, next up, we've got Chris Kruger, then Sue Lalabac, then Tricia Conley. Next up, we've got Chris Kruger, then Sue Lalabac, then Tricia Conley. Is Chris with us? Chris Kruger?
I don't believe so, Mayor.
All right. How about Sue Lalabac?
Great. Good evening, everybody. I'm Sue Lalabac. I work with connections for the homeless and lead joining forces for affordable housing. I'm here tonight just to speak very briefly in favor of the text amendment to the City of Evanston zoning code related to efficiency homes. We favor this amendment because in light of the affordable housing shortage, it's critical that the city proactively seek out ways to use its land in as flexible and creative a way as possible. We believe that this text amendment moves Evanston zoning code in the right direction. First, it will remove restrictions that make otherwise usable parcels of land unusable simply because of zoning. And second, many of these parcels are owned by the city, which is in an excellent position to leverage them in such a way as to create actual affordable housing. Given that we expect the pandemic to exacerbate the housing crisis, it's more important than ever that the city look at ways to increase the supply of affordable housing. This ordinance opens up some new possibilities, and we hope that you'll take advantage of this opportunity and approve the amendment. Thank you.
Thanks, Sue. All right, next up, we've got Tricia Conley, then Ray Freeman, then Ally Harned.
Oh, you unmuted me. Sorry, I'm ready, but I know I don't have a turn yet. I did not unmute myself.
We're looking for Trish Conley right now.
Yeah, I'm here.
She is, okay. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Hagerty, members of City Council, and Clerk Reed. I want to first acknowledge the concerns many in our community have about the current reparations program. Although there's been a lot of time, energy, and research put into the current draft proposal of this plan led by Alderman Robin Rue Simmons and others, and I know there's been a lot of time and dedication, we must make certain that more voices in our Black community are heard about what this should be. This isn't about blaming people. It's about making sure it's a program that gives what is due to those who have been harmed in our community. It's also ensuring we're true to our word that it is reparations and not something else. Please pause your decision on this. Secondly, I'm speaking about SP1. As a member of Evanston Community Lake House and Gardens, I have deep concerns about the fairness of this process. The document that was shared is incomplete with our data, and we submitted everything to the city under appropriate timelines. Our information about securing a $1.5 million loan is missing, and one is left to wonder why we would get low ratings on benefits for public use and benefits for proposed use of property. Did staff consider equity here? We were the only organization that held public meetings that had people across wards all over Evanston, across race, across age, and ethnicity, to join our breakout sessions to generate ideas and vision for this public space. This vote must be delayed until the new council. There are some things here that must be cleared up on the public's behalf. Furthermore, given that we are still in the throes of a pandemic, the idea of any RFP respondents going out to the community to raise funds for a building on the lake, when many of our fellow residents are homeless and hungry, seems at the very least insensitive. The optics are terrible. A postponement until the community and the country is back to some semblance of normal would seem only to be proper. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Next up, we've got Ray Freeman, then Ally Harned, and then I believe Jane Grover is a no. No, she texted me, and then Patrick Donnelly. So Ray, are you with us?
Yes, I am here tonight. Good evening, Mayor Hagerty, City Council, City Clerk, and City Manager. Just a couple of points I wanted to make. First, I'd like to say I agree with everybody who spoke before me. It was an awesome public comment tonight. So four days ago, I got an email from Evanston E-News, which there was a whole bunch of stuff going on here in Evanston, talking about COVID-19. And somewhere in that E-News article was a meeting, a dog park public meeting next Tuesday, March 16th at 5:00, and the next day, a skate park public meeting, Wednesday, March 17th, at 5:30. But the question is, like many people have spoken about already, why have we had no discussion on Harley Clark? And for that matter, I mean, I haven't followed quotes attention with the reparations, but it seems the same. And like we've been saying for the last four years, we need to have the dialogue with the council, with the mayor, with, you know, with the city manager. We need to have feedback. We need to have responses from all of our public comments that it's crucial to, I think, the success of the city, because this is not going well. Okay? I notice on the agenda for tonight, all items except for two, okay, are all for action. There's no discussion. Why is there no discussion except for A5 and A6, which is, by the way, for intro and action? So all 13 items are for action for tonight. So what happened to the discussion and where's the discussion with the residents? Don't we get a voice and a choice, which we've been saying for years? This is, it's not good. It's not correct, like everybody before me has said. Please hold the votes for Harley Clark. Please hold the votes for reparation until the new council comes in and residents have an opportunity to speak and have their voices heard. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ray. Next up, Ally Harned, then Patrick Donnelly.
Good evening, honorable everybody, and happy International Women's Day. I agree with what has been said so far about the Harley Clark lease decision, that making a decision tonight is ill-advised for many reasons. First, this is an issue that has been in debate for, what, like eight years now, with many chapters of intrigue and despair. Tonight, we are sitting at 21 days from an election, which will make the city council have at least three new members, but as many as eight new votes out of nine sitting on the dais in two months. So what is the rush right now? Secondly, it's a matter of priorities. I'm a school social worker in Evanston, as you know, and I don't think that I should have to tell you that the priorities of our most vulnerable community members right now are basic needs: food, housing, survival, education. Any philanthropic dollars that people are able to share right now should go towards those priorities. And any groups raising money for Harley Clark should honor those priorities and let the building sit and wait a little bit longer while the community climbs out of this pandemic. Finally, as many have already said tonight, this process seems quite flawed. Again, where was the public opportunity to participate in the analysis of the proposals and to give their input into the decisions made? As has been shown by the State Harley Clark referendum results and the Harley Clark community members that are the basis and the heart of the proposal of the Evanston Community Lake House and Gardens, the people in Evanston want to participate in the future of the home and the lake. Give people more time to participate. Do not award the lease tonight. Wait for the next council to take their seats and let them write the next chapters that will hopefully be less despair and more delight. Finally, as a white person, I do not feel that I should speak on reparations, but I will say that I am listening to the voices of Black Evanstonians to whom the harm has been done and must be repaired, and I hope that the city council will listen to those voices as well. Thank you. Good evening. Happy 21 days till Election Day to everyone. Black Lives Matter and Black Women Matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Ally. All right, Patrick Donnelly, I've got you next, if you're with us, Pat.
Hey, Steve. Hi, City Council. Hi, city staff. I just wanted to echo what everyone else was saying to postpone the Harley Clark vote. I think my own personal opinion on that is you're handing off a big ticket item to the future city council. They're going to want to chime in on, you know, the terms and how all this is run. Everyone has to raise so much money. And for the last five years I've been involved in Harley Clark, we watched the city spend so much money on Robert Crown and Fountain Square and, you know, the lawsuits. And it was really hard for five years to hear there is not one penny for Harley Clark. Even the $2.50 that was put in the bank, not one penny for Harley Clark. And, you know, we were very patient with that. I just want to say, we want to be a part of the future of Harley Clark. We just want to be a part of it. We're a community group. We're not trying to win anything. I think we have a really good plan, and we just want to be a part of that. When we got a two for our expertise with a guy like Bill Brown on our board who oversaw the construction of Botanical Gardens, that hurt. You know, when Elliot Dudnick, who's the architect who was hired by the City of Evanston to take care of Harley Clark and do the tuck pointing and make it strong, and he's on our board and we got a two for expertise, that hurt. When Bennett Johnson, who marched with Martin Luther King and has been a community leader, especially for the Black residents of Evanston, and we get a two for expertise and community engagement, that really hurt us, you guys. And I'm just speaking from the heart. We want to be a part of Harley Clark, and that's all I have to say. I hope we can postpone it, but if a decision has to be made tonight, I hope somehow you include us as a part somehow. All the other proposals are great. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. All right. Luke, Patrick was the last one that I had on my agenda. I'm really quick going to go through some of the no-shows earlier, just in case they wanted to comment. Vicki Gaines, Morris Fisher, Christine Leon, Judith Treadway, and Yasmeen.
Hi, sorry, can I make a comment, Steve?
Oh, this is Lindsay? Yes, you can, Lindsay. Go ahead.
Yeah, so I'd just like to ask the city council, as others before me did, to delay the vote on reparations until after the general election. And I think you guys need to do more work in terms of collecting more input from the Black community before you guys vote on that.
Okay. Thank you. All right, was there anyone else that wasn't here earlier? Chris Kruger? Okay. Luke, I don't have anyone else. Just want to confirm with you before we move on to the agenda.
That's my understanding.
All right, all right. Thank you, everybody, for coming out this evening and speaking on a variety of issues. I know the city council values the input that this process allows. We're now going to move to the agenda. We have one item on special orders of business, and that is SP1. I'm going to ask if our aldermen, if your camera's not on, if you could put your camera on so we can start the discussion. And I'm going to ask if aldermen, I'm going to go with one that I can see. So how about Alderman Revelle tonight? If you could, since this is in your ward, if you could just move SP1, please.
Sure. I'm not quite sure what my motion should say.
Yeah, so I think what I would do, Alderman, I'm sorry, is, yeah, I don't, just do a motion for us to have a conversation, and then if someone wants to motion on the council, you or any other alderman, for a specific option, we can do that. But at least let's get it moving for some discussion.
Because I think we do have a lot of questions that we need answers to. So then I move...
If I can make one note before Alderman Revelle moves this, the person who moves it can't speak against, according to our rules. So just if Alderman Revelle is going to potentially speak against the proposal, she should maybe let someone else move the motion.
Just a point of information, I think we might want to weigh in on legal. A motion to move something is a motion to move something. I've never in my years of Roberts rules, I've heard such a rule. So Kelly, can you just...
That's not a rule. It's not a council rule.
Yeah, that doesn't make any...
Certainly a Roberts rule.
That's not a council rule.
Not a council rule.
Not a council.
Well, the council rule says that on any rule that we're silent on, we follow Roberts rules.
I object.
Let's just, I just thought that Alderman Revelle could move it and just say...
Alderman Revelle, would you like for me to move the motion for discussion?
Why don't we just move to introduce it, and then we can just carry on normally?
I don't have a dog in this fight. I can move it.
I'm trying to figure out what to introduce. I'd like to introduce, I move that we embark on a discussion of the lease for Harley Clark.
Second.
Second.
All right, so the floor is now open for discussion. And again, at some point, if someone wants to move a specific option here of the four proposals, they can do that. And if there's a second, we can go from there. But it's open for discussion now. So let's start with Alderman Revelle, since this is in your ward, Alderman.
Sure. Well, along with a lot of residents who offered public comment tonight, I do have some questions about the staff evaluation. And I didn't know, City Manager, whether there was going to be a presentation about how the staff, what were the criteria that the staff used as they were evaluating the proposals? It was very, not clear to me at all what the evaluations were based on.
Yeah, so while we wait for Erica Storey, the city manager, to put her camera on, yeah, Erica, I agree. I think it would be helpful to all of us and to the public to just talk about the process. Obviously, we had a council meeting a while back where we get presentations from each of the groups. So take us, you know, from that point, if you would.
Hagerty, can you hear me?
I can. Again, you're very soft on my end. I don't know for the other aldermen, I think you're soft for all of us.
All right, I'm going to try this. Is this better?
A little better, yes.
All right, so good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, City Clerk Reed. Tonight, Tashikur is here to give an overview of the process that was used for the staff scoring, and we also have representatives from each one of the entities who submitted proposals on hand to answer any questions that the council may have about each of the individual proposals. So at this point, I will introduce Tashikur for that brief overview. We do not have a formal presentation, but she can answer any questions as well.
Okay, thank you.
So good evening.
Welcome, Tashik.
Thank you. So good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tashikur, management analyst, and I oversaw the evaluation of the Harley Clark proposals. So tonight, what I'm bringing back to you is the scoring of the proposals, which were based on the six criteria listed in the RFP, as well as the main components staff took into consideration, and which will help the city council distinguish between the proposals. And that is listed in the summary score sheet as an attachment in your packet. So there was one question about how we went about scoring. So staff was instructed to assign a score from one through five for each criteria. That score was then average and then times by the weight factor. So each criteria had a weight factor. If you're looking at memo, let's see. So qualification expertise, weight factor of 25, financial capabilities to execute proposal, 25, benefit of the proposed use of the property, 25, and benefit of the public use component of the Evanston community, 15, organization and completeness, five, and commitment to meet the MDE participation goal, a five. Those were the weighing factors. Any question?
Here, how many members of staff scored the proposals?
Yes, one. Eight members of staff scored the proposals from various departments, including public works, community development, legal, finance, division, facilities and fleet management, city manager's office, and the purchasing division.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Erica, this is probably more directed to you than to Tashik. Is this process that the city used to evaluate these proposals similar to processes that are used to evaluate other proposals? I mean, we have RFPs all the time as a city. So if you could talk to us about how this is similar or different from those other processes, I think that would be helpful.
Sure. So every time we have a bid or an RFP, it is completely handled by our purchasing department to ensure that all of the relevant state laws and binding regulations are followed. So this process was no different in that regard. The purchasing division handled this exclusively, along with Tashik. All communication was through the purchasing point person, who was Jill Ostman, and all of the scoring was evaluated and the metrics calculated based upon the input from the purchasing department, based on what was communicated in the RFP.
Could you speak up, please?
Did you catch any of that?
Oh, now it's much better, Erica. Whatever you just did, it's much better. Whatever you just did, it's much better. I can hear you much better. So why don't you say what you said again, if you would. I'm not sure Alderman Rainey and others caught all of that.
Sure, I was just explaining that, like all of the other RFPs, that we issue, the purchasing division handled this RFP from start to finish, as they have with other RFPs. And they determined what the scoring metrics would be based on those that were communicated in the proposal that was sent out. So they managed the process from start to finish. Staff was in charge of scoring the proposals, similar that they do all the other proposals. And not anything different was deviated from in this instance.
Okay. Alderman Revelle?
Well, I, I mean, I understand how the math worked. And I know that the language of the categories is what was in the RFP. But I think, I think a lot of us are not at all sure. For example, you know, what exactly did staff have in mind when they were evaluating proposals for benefit of the proposed use and benefit of the public use? And then speaking personally for financial capability, I would have appreciated knowing, having separate scores for the funding plan and then another score for the business plan, because those are two really important elements of the likely success of the proposal. So, I mean, I know it's a little, little late for that now, but I guess I would really be interested if there's any staff person who could talk to us about how benefit of proposed use and benefit of the public use was defined. What were they thinking as they were making, you know, assigning the points for those things?
You're on mute.
You're muted.
Sorry about that. We do have a few staff people on the call who were involved in the scoring of the proposals. We couldn't, Lawrence Hemingway was on the call. He can talk to it. I'm sure one of the, one of the parts of that was, does this duplicate anything that the city currently offers, things like that? So I will ask him to opine on that as well. But I also did want to mention that, you know, this has been obviously a contentious issue for as long as we can all remember. And staff was put in the position of scoring these proposals at the direction of city council. And where we find ourselves today is that staff has evaluated these proposals. They have read all the materials. They have listened to all the meetings. And they have come up with a metric and they have scored these proposals. But that does not bind the city council to follow any of these staff scorings. These are just to inform the conversation and inform the discussion. And if the council needs additional information from any of the proposers, they can ask that tonight, or they can direct staff to obtain that information at a later date and bring it back to the city council. So just wanted to give that for context. And if Lawrence is on the call, I will ask him not to share the thinking about the benefit of the public use. That was the question from Alderman Revelle.
Any other questions for our staff? Or would people like to hear from anyone? Okay. Seeing that, I'm going to go to Alderman Wilson.
Do we want to hear from Lawrence Hemingway first?
Yeah, it looks like he's here. So if he was going to do it, then I'll just talk after him.
I'm sorry, Lawrence, I'm sorry, I didn't see you. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, clerk Reed, city manager Storley. So whenever you are, so I'll speak to my experience and how I looked at this. We're looking at, and unfortunately, I don't have my, the scoring sheet in front of me, but at the time, when these are originally scored, we're looking at the criteria as is laid out in the RFP. I am using, reading through the individual proposal and what it is that they are suggesting that, you know, they plan to do based upon, I think, community benefit was specific. And so what, you know, it's how I interpret individually what that community benefit is, that I assign a score based upon what we've asked in the original RFP. And so when I am scoring those, those proposals for this project or any project, you have to, you know, do exactly what is outlined and what is asked of us in the original RFP. And it's based upon my professional experience and the activity and the information that is provided by that individual proposal. So as I am scoring things, that's the perspective that I use in trying to score things fair and equitable. And I believe at the end of the day, each of us who participated in this process provided an individual score. That individual score was overall, I believe, measured by, you know, Tashik did a average or an overall score to come up with the individual scores that was presented to you guys in the memo. So that's how I approach it. You just have to use the criteria that you asked and that you asked the proposers to respond to. And excuse me, and here's our criteria in measuring that. So that's what I use in evaluating the four proposals.
And thanks, thank you, Lawrence. And I would just say that, and that's why you have multiple people that are scoring it, so you can, you know, throw out the high, low, if you need to, average the others. I mean, my company, we submit hundreds and hundreds of these proposals, government proposals, every year. We lose two-thirds of them. So we lose way more than we ever win. And I sort of feel the same way, some of these people tonight. Well, what do you mean? How did you score me this, you know? Because you can ask for the scores and everything. And it's just the best process there is. There is, you know, while there's criteria and everything else. Obviously, there's a level of subjectivity. You hope that you, you know, can smooth that out by having multiple people. And that's why they have these committees that review proposals. So that's just been, that's my experience. Let's see, Alderman Wilson, I know you've got your hand up.
Thanks, and I guess I just want to kind of talk about it, you know, a little bit generally, then more specifically. But this is an issue that some of us have been working on for, I think, close to 10 years. And I think at least all of us have been working on for something in the neighborhood of four years. And the property, you know, based on my, you know, enjoyment of the space and the property, it happens to be particularly important to me. For those who followed along over the 10 years, I think that comes as no surprise. But at the same time, I think this is probably the most over-discussed issue that I'm aware of in Evanston. It's been talked about, you know, more times than I can recall. There have been more meetings than I can, you know, even remember to count. But, you know, we've gone from, you know, a number of different proposals that were considered to the possibility of it being torn down, to it not being torn down, and now to this current process, which has actually been, I think, you know, the fact of the matter is, with the pandemic, it's drawn out the process. So had that not happened, we probably would have been, you know, in a point where we were deciding this much sooner. To me, you know, the scoring part of the process is just one tool, and that's just one part of the decision process. It's certainly not all of the decision. I think that all of us have, you know, been here long enough, are familiar enough with the community, and I think should be familiar enough with the proposals, the presentations that we've seen, and the information that we've gotten to be able to make a very informed and thoughtful decision. I think that this process, it's been great because it's given us, you know, multiple excellent proposals with some great concepts. I appreciate that very much. You know, again, we got to a point where the answer was, okay, we don't have anything on the table that works, so let's have it torn down. I didn't like that, but we've come back from that. So we've rallied from that position and that point to a point where we now have a number of very solid proposals. So it's incumbent on us to actually, you know, make some decisions here and to move forward. It's certainly not rushed. I know I've gotten a number of emails from people saying that it feels like it's rushed. It's not rushed. Like I said, this is one of the, you know, most, and I say over-discussed, because in the context of important work that we do, important needs in the community, this is not the most important thing. But if you put the amount of time and conversation that's been spent on this in comparison to other important needs and other important issues, I do think that it's been disproportionate, and that's probably unfortunate. But at the same time, a lot of people care deeply about it, and it is important to a lot of people. I do want to, I want to acknowledge Jennifer Shader and the Friends of Harley Clark for your thoughtful work and coming up with some fundraising to help whatever proposal ends up being successful. I've given this a great deal of thought over a great, you know, a long period of time. I spend a lot of time at the property now and before, and I've been in the building many times. And, you know, I've taken my personal experiences and put those together with what I've heard from community members, a number of the people who've been here tonight. I've had a lot of conversations with over the years. And, you know, when I put all of that together, I personally feel like the Artist Book House proposal rises to the top of, like I said, a series of good proposals. But I feel like that one is the most appropriate for where we're at. And I would suggest, I don't know if there's other hands for discussion, but I'd be willing to make a motion to, to accept the Artist Book House proposal.
Second.
All right, there's a motion, a second, so it's open for discussion. This is to move the Artist Book House. Alderman Fleming?
I had a question about something else, not the Artist Book House, so I guess.
Okay.
Well, certainly, if like, if there's a question about any of them, we should ask the questions, since they're all here.
Yes, I agree. Go ahead. Anyway, go ahead.
I have a question just about a comment that was made by, I think, a couple of people. And I can't just, I can't remember, so Erica, can you help me? There was mention about us making a commitment to have residents look at the, either residents or, anyway, I guess residents look at the proposals or be part of the review process. Can you just clarify that, please?
It's honestly been so long that we talked about this originally. I don't recall exactly what the council's direction was at the time when this first was brought before the council. But if that's a component that the council would wish for us to add, we could certainly do that.
My recollection of it was that there would be a public setting where they could present their, present their plans, and then we'd have a conversation. And if I remember that meeting, I thought that's what we did. And then we let the public comment to it come after the four presentations. That was my recollection. I could be wrong. Alderman, I'll go.
To be clear, I mean, I understand if, even if we said that and we couldn't do it because of COVID, but I think, you know, I would just want to know if we did say that piece, if people were, you know, looking to participate in whatever that was. But I do, Steve, we did have those conversations with the presentations and the exaggerated conversation and such about that piece. So that was satisfied.
Alderman Wilson had his hand up on that, too. And I think my name was mentioned as having, you know, talked about it. Again, I can't remember exactly what I said, exactly when. And it's been so many, so many years, so many occasions. But as far as, you know, the presentation and presentations by the proposals, the information that we've gotten from them, the submissions that they've provided, you know, the websites that they've got available, you know, and the many, many, many conversations. And I've also been hearing from people on a, you know, steady stream basis for, you know, years and also in the past, you know, year plus, since these have been on the table from people. I'm personally satisfied with, you know, with, you know, being able to have enough information to make an informed decision.
Do others feel the same? Or is there anyone that feels strongly the other way? Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
That was real.
Oh, okay. Oh, I didn't see you guys. All right. Alderman, let's go Alderman Fisk and then Suffolk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We must have been hiding down there in the corner. So my recollection is that we had the presentations, a public comment at the presentations. And then in order to just make sure that everybody's financials were reflecting or might possibly reflect some COVID issues, that's why we held it over to this point. So I think we've satisfied that. I satisfied the comment part of it. If anybody else has a different recollection, that's what mine is.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Alderman Suffolk?
And I'm looking through it now. My understanding is March 11th, 2019 minutes. Show exactly what was said, or I don't want to say promised.
Yeah, let's do it.
We'll shed some light on exactly what this council said that on this topic. And I think it's probably important that we be very clear about what we said and whether or not we did that. And I don't, I assume that it's within this council's authority to disregard whatever it said it would do. But if we're going to do that, I think we should be very intentional and explicit about that we're choosing to do that.
Do you have it in front, do you have it in front of you? Can you read?
I'm throwing out my phone.
I have it here. I actually have it.
Why don't you refresh all of our members?
So, and so this was a discussion item, it looks like, in 2019. And so thanks to Ms. Shader, who just sent it to me. Appreciate that. And it also precedes the RFP. So there was a motion for the staff to, I'm reading from the minutes, motion to prepare RFP similar to previous RFP, where the city maintains ownership of the land with a nine-month timeframe, where the recipient is not required to be a not-for-profit. Additionally, the review evaluation committee should include members of the public, and the proposal can include uses for the main house, coach house, or both. And so that passed, it looks like maybe five to four, or something like that. But again, that precedes the actual RFP and RFP process. So now we've engaged in this, like, you know, entire lengthy process after that. So, and I do think that the community has been, you know, has been involved and engaged. And then, you know, I don't think we created a quote-unquote committee, per se. But it was, I think, certainly the intent and spirit of that has been met, you know, over this, you know, two-year timeframe.
Do I ask a few more questions?
All right, yes.
So, and this is a question probably for Erica and perhaps Kelly Ganderzki. The vote tonight requires five aldermen to agree to authorize you to enter into negotiations with a proposer, correct?
Good evening, members of city council. This is Kelly Ganderzki. To enter into a lease agreement, it requires six votes of city council. But if you're just voting on whether to accept one of the proposals, I believe it's just a majority vote.
Okay, and that's what we're voting tonight, a simple majority?
The motion, I believe, was to accept the proposal, one in particular proposal.
Okay, and then you anticipate that we will have the vote, which will require six votes in this city council, that we talked about this afternoon. You think that those negotiations will proceed in a pace that will allow this council to be the one to vote?
We have standard lease agreements that we already are willing and able to get to the winning proposer. And it's just a matter of whether the attorneys agree on the language, per usual. But I don't anticipate, unless there's something extraordinary about a term, I don't anticipate there being a whole lot of time taken up on those terms.
Okay, and then Alderman Rainey, I apologize in advance. But it was brought up, and I just wanted a legal opinion. Does Alderman Rainey need to recuse herself from this discussion or this vote?
I had this, I sent an email to Alderman Rainey and to the mayor. And my understanding was that when this issue was brought before the council at the Rules Committee, after the Board of Ethics ruling, the Rules Committee voted not to censure Alderman Rainey and chose not to take any action. So it's really up to the council as to how to proceed. The council chose not to follow the recommendation of the Board of Ethics. So there's nothing prohibiting her from voting tonight.
Okay, and then I'll just say really quickly in closing, there certainly is validity to what Alderman Wilson said about the level and quantity of discussion on this topic. And I just hope that we'll all be mindful of the potential to further diminish the credibility of, not just this city council is currently constituted, but the- not just this City Council is currently constituted, but the institution of the City Council. And if we move forward in any way that's perceived to have been predetermined, then I know no matter what we decide, there's gonna be disappointed Evanstonians. But I hope that we'll just be mindful of the potential damage that can be done if we're perceived as proceeding in a way that isn't entirely above board.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Rainey?
I, I think that this is a motion that will lead to the negotiation of a lease, is it not?
Correct, it is.
So why would this not require six votes? I think what the strategy here is, is to have this, allow this vote to take place. And then, and then I think that, I think this vote probably should be six votes. I'm not sure.
Well, at the end of the day, if six people aren't agreeing to this and, you know, a month from now they bring back the lease for this that they negotiated, look, there's a chance that that too only passes five to four and then it doesn't pass because you need six votes. So I would agree that if you get six votes tonight, then there's a level of confidence if you're satisfied with the terms and conditions of the lease agreement that it will pass.
I would agree with you, Mayor.
All right, so we have the motion to move forward with the Artist House. That was seconded. Is there any further discussion on that before we take a vote on that? Alderman Winn?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just gonna have a sip of water. I did wanna comment on this because I have been on the council the entire time that this has been discussed. And I do believe that this council is the most prepared one to cast a vote on this. And I know other people wish that that weren't so. But when I think about all of the time that this council has put into this, all of the presentations that we've heard, the public comments that we've had and our deliberations that we've had over this, I mean, that's what's brought us to this, to these proposals, the RFP and then the responses to that. And so I think that in keeping with that, this is the council that should finish that job that we all worked on, we have all worked on so hard with the community. So I do think that this is the correct council to do that. I understand people's concerns about moving it. But for COVID, as Alderman Wilson said, we would have decided this on this council and there wouldn't be a question of it being put off to a later date. So with that, I do wanna say that I wanna thank everyone in the community who has worked so hard on Harley Clark. You know, the common goal here was to preserve the house, preserve the mansion, and all four of these proposals do that. And yet they reflect, you know, hundreds and hundreds, if not thousands of hours of work from a lot of dedicated members of our community who've taken time out of their lives to work on this. And I think it's very impressive. And every one of these proposals in my mind has merit. They all present very interesting ideas and show a lot of creativity. So I wanna thank everyone who's participated in that. My evaluation on all of this has been based initially always on can we restore Harley Clark? How do they do in terms of restoring Harley Clark? Can they restore Jen's Jensen's magnificent gardens? And then is the use compatible with the location as Alderman Wilson was referencing? And then is this use one that works best with the beautiful park that we have at Lighthouse Beach? And really during the pandemic, we can see that all of our parks are much more heavily used than they have been ever before, all year round. And so I think that actually makes me think even harder about how does the proposed, these proposed uses, how will they impact the residents' uses of that park and that beach? Because we now know that beaches are used in January. So I have looked at all of these and for, when I evaluate all of this, and I think they all, as I said, have merit. To me, the book house definitely is the one that has, that fulfills all of those requirements in the best way possible in my mind. And so I wanted to explain that while I think that every one of these is interesting and meets some of these criterias, I believe the book house best meets those in my mind. I think that the fact that it will, it can coexist with the beach and the park best and will have the fewest number of events is something that's really significant to me. I've always been concerned about weddings and conferences causing congestion there at Harley Clark. And I believe that the fact that the book house will not be having so many events is really critical to my, to my analysis of this. As I said, all of them are wonderful proposals. I'm very happy that we're gonna have the chance to restore that mansion and have it be here in Evanston for residents to enjoy. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I agree with everything that Alderman Winn said. I think that from the beginning, I always wanted to try to find a way to preserve the mansion, but the cost of it was so prohibitive and I really struggled with that. So I am thrilled that the responses we got from the RFP will preserve the mansion regardless of which one we choose. I'm also expressed concern that, as Alderman Winn said, that we not overwhelm the lakefront with special events. I have the Women's Club in my ward and I know very well the wonderful members at the Women's Club have two guiding principles. One is to maintain their clubhouse and the other one is to make contributions to the community. And that is very dependent on getting as many, as many meetings and as many events in there as possible. I just don't think that's, that is something that is consistent with what we view for our lakefront. The third part is that with the Artist Book House, I really, I'm excited about the fact that this is a totally new thing for us. This is, I think, going to attract a lot of interest into Evanston. And I think that's a wonderful, a wonderful idea. So I'm going to support the Artist Book House. To me, it was absolutely head and shoulders above many of the others in terms of giving me the confidence that I need in order to look at a long-term lease with an organization that we're turning a public asset over to. So that's where I am.
All right, thank you, Alderman Fisk. Alderman Ravel?
Well, I also, I'm going to agree with Alderman Winn and Alderman Fisk. And particularly, I appreciate Alderman Winn's comments about all the proposals that we received and the just thousands of hours that residents have put into developing those proposals. I'm going to, despite my initial comments at the beginning about the staff assessments, I personally am not paying attention to those and I'm just going on, you know, my conversations, extensive conversations over the past five years that I've been on the council and reading the proposals in depth one more time. So I'm just gonna touch briefly on a couple of the other proposals. And so Evanston Conservancy, I think, I thought they bring really innovative and successful fundraising experience to the table. I thought their whole business plan, their finance plan was pretty exciting. It off, the proposed uses offer meaningful community benefits and the community contributions that each of the tenants was going to offer were really impressive. So their whole package was really, really a wonderful package. But I do fear that the impact of the proposed uses, particularly the big number of special events that were going to be scheduled to be able to make their business plan work, were just really, would have overwhelmed the property. You know, as many as eight events a month. This would depend on what kind of revenue sharing option that we wanted to go with. So I, you know, really, a lot of, just an amazing amount of creativity in that proposal. But I just, the impact on the property is too great. Evanston Community Lake House and Gardens, you know, those of you who've been following Harley Clark saga for as closely as I know everybody in the council has, you know that I was a really strong supporter of the lakehouse proposal in 2018. And I really appreciate all the time and energy that the leaders from the lakehouse group have continued to devote to advancing their mission, refining it now for this next proposal. And I appreciate the really extensive outreach that they undertook to talk with people from all parts of the country, the community, to put together the programming that they're proposing. But as with the Evanston Conservancy, I do think the impact of their overall proposal is once again too great for the Harley Clark property. The business plan relies heavily on a number of, you know, a good number of income-producing special events. And that I just think that's too much for the property. So I am, you know, turning now to the Artist Book House. I do think it's an exciting proposal. It offers a really clear and compelling vision for what Harley Clark would be used for. The proposers bring experience with a very successful books and paper art center at the Columbia College, which is now no longer in existence. But that, their experience there really inspires confidence, I think, in the Artist Book House. There, I don't know if you had a chance to look at their website, but it's already offering a whole range of online programming that's building an audience for an eventual in-person Artist Book House at Harley Clark. I think the proposed uses are very appropriate for, in terms of the intensity of use. I also, you know, looking at the sort of sample week of programming that they were suggesting could be something that they would offer. I mean, there are a lot, a number of opportunities, events that would be, I think, really of interest to a wide range of people in Evanston. I think about the Poetry Slam, the Science Fiction and Fantasy Group, a Making Comics Workshop. So I think there's a lot in there besides bookmaking and those kinds of fancy things. And I like the possibility of Kurt's Cafe, operating the cafe there. So I'm, you know, happy to vote for the Artist Book House tonight.
Thank you. Alderman Fleming. Alderwoman Fleming?
Thank you. Real quick, I wanted to speak again just to the piece about the public input. I realize we didn't really settle that. Just for the public, I know I usually always try to make sure we have done exactly what we said we're gonna do. And I did not think about that earlier. However, as Alderman Ravel just said, looking, you know, staff score aside, looking at the proposals and understanding, at least for my four years, how much time we spent talking about this and the proposals that have been before us. I do think the Artist Book House brings a lot of interesting opportunities to the city. And that said, I appreciate everyone who's stuck with this. I can't imagine pursuing a project as long as so many of these citizens have. And I appreciate that, appreciate that about Evanston. And I do apologize if we missed kind of the citizen part. As you know, in the last year, it's been quite a whirlwind with the pandemic. So I can't say that we didn't maybe miss that one piece. But I don't, I don't feel comfortable passing this on to a next council. They still will have to deal with it in terms of the lease and implementing and everything else. But given the amount of time that this topic has been before us, I think the new council, whatever they look like, will have a lot of things to do. And I don't think it's good government to pass this on to them. We are so close. We've done all of the things to get, you know, these proposals in front of us. And we also owe it to the proposers, whether we choose them or not, to give them some kind of closure and guidance for their next steps, which they will go through with the next council. So I don't think we should leave this. I think it's important we get this done. Just as I sat here four years ago and was left with Harley Clark and several other items, I don't think that's fair for me to leave that with other people. And I imagine that, you know, I'm sure people will disagree. I did get the same emails as other people. But it's just not good government to leave things that you can take care of that are so close to being finished. The other things that I do think we should leave because they're not close to being finished. But as much as we can, we should wrap it up and leave a clean slate for the new council. Erica, if you could just make sure whatever happens after tonight, if we did make any other, you know, suggestions or commitments or whatever, that those move forward and we're clear about those so that ourselves or the new council are clear about whatever it is we did commit to doing. And for the residents who thought that was gonna be part of the process, I do apologize again. You know, it's been COVID, so maybe we missed that step. But we are capable of looking at the material provided to us and making a decision regardless of what, you know, the staff or whatever, you know, graph we're looking at tells us.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Any other comments? All right, so seeing none, we had a motion, it was seconded. And this was to have the city manager move forward with negotiations with the Artist Book House. So I'm gonna ask the city clerk to take the role. He'll be starting with Alderman Fleming tonight.
Thank you on that. Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Absolutely.
Alderman Winn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton?
No.
And Alderman Ravel?
Aye.
What about Alderman Rainey?
What about Alderman Rainey?
You call on me.
Alderman Rainey?
I am going to abstain.
All right, so on a seven to zero vote with, excuse me, a seven to one vote with Alderman Rainey abstaining, the City Council is directing the city manager to move forward with negotiations with the Artist Book House for Harley Clark. I wanna thank all the different proposal groups. I know this has been going on for a long time. I know there's a tremendous amount of work. And there were a lot of good ideas and proposals. So thank you to the Evanston Conservancy. Thank you to the Evanston Community Lake House and Gardens. And thank you to the One Community Museum Group as well for all of your work. We're now gonna move on to the consent agenda. Because there was APW today, I'm gonna ask council members if they would take a minute and identify items that they would like to pull off the agenda for us to discuss.
B3.
Let's see, B3?
P3.
P3, P, yes, P3.
A1 and A6.
A1, A6 are off, okay.
A2, please.
What's that?
A2.
A2, okay. Other items?
Mayor of MA, A5, I believe, needs to be removed because it's an intro and action.
Somebody could just, if they wanna keep it on, they could just move a motion for allowing that to be intro and action. Oh, wait. No, we didn't have to, oh, do the rules have to be suspended on that? It didn't say that, but yes.
Yes, it does.
Okay. All right, anything else that folks want off the agenda? All right, so right now I have A1 off, A2 off, A6 off, and then P3. And then before we take the vote, I'll just need a motion to allow us to move forward with introduction and action for A5.
I move that we suspend the rules to allow us to introduce and take action on item A5.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, seeing no discussion, city clerk, you take the role on suspending the rules to allow for intro and action for A5.
Yes. Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Winn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton?
Aye.
Alderman Ravel?
Aye.
And Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
All right, so on a nine to zero vote, the rules are suspended, allowing P A5 to be for introduction and action. Let's see, Alderman Sufferton, could you just move the consent agenda with those items removed?
Sure, I moved the consent agenda from today's administrative public works committee, meaning with the exception of items A6 and A1.
And A2.
And A2, apparently.
Second.
All right, Aldery, can you also just move the? All right, Aldery, can you also just move the, the C, the council meeting minutes, CM one and CM two?
Sure, I also move items CM one and CM two, council meeting minutes of previous meetings.
All right, thank, thank you. Alderman Fisk, can you just move P and D? Why don't you, actually, because we didn't have P and D today, why don't you just read the ones that we're putting on the consent agenda?
Okay, so what we are putting on the consent agenda is P one, it's ordinance 11021 extending the time for the applicant to obtain a building permit for 910 to 938 Custer. That's for action. And P two is ordinance 12021 granting a major adjustment to a planned development located at 811 Emerson Street. That's regarding parking, and that is also for action. And then P three is off the consent agenda.
Thank, thank you. And then Alderman Ruth Simmons, could you just move H one and H two?
Yes. H one, resolution 34R21 declaring lead pipe replacement throughout the City of Evanson a public benefit. And H two is resolution 31R21 approval of the City of Evanson Parks Recreation Department's facility naming policy.
And both of those are for action. Is there a second to the consent agenda? Second. All right, city clerk, could you please take the role on the consent agenda?
Yes, Alderman Fleming? I'm sorry, am I muted?
Nope, we can hear you.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton?
Aye.
Alderman Ravel?
Aye.
And Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
All right, thank you, clerk. The city, the consent agenda passes the Evanston City Council on a nine to zero vote. We're now going to move to the items that were removed from the consent agenda. Alderman Sufferton, could you move A one, please?
Sure, I move item A one, which is, not on my computer, but it is the.
Bills.
It's the bills. I moved the bills.
If you don't have, that's not, that's not a problem. Let me ask, Alderman Rainey, could you just move A one for us?
Staff recommends city coun, well, am I muted? No. Staff recommends city council approval of City of Evanson payroll for a period February one through February 14 in the amount of $3,413,246, and the bills list to March 9 in the amount of $2,585,350.20. It's for action, I move approval.
Second.
All right, so this item's open for any discussion?
Yeah, so we were supposed to get further clarification on a $4,000 credit that we were getting from central rug and carpet from Sharon Johnson. I don't, I don't know that we got that. I don't know if, I'm not going to hold this up because it's a credit, not a payment, but I would ask that at staff's earliest convenience that we get that explanation.
Erica, thank, thank, thank you, Alderman, okay.
Sorry about that, Dave Stombeck is here for that.
Okay, thanks. Dave, you remember, you remember the question, right?
Yes, I do, thank you. Dave Stomack, Public Works Director, Mr. Mayor, Alderman and Clerk Reed. Sharon was at home, did not have the information in front of her tonight, but this is probably being assessed to them for work at the Fleetwood Jordan. They did not meet the LEP program. It was mistakenly said during public comment that this is a must type of thing. So our city code in section 1171C5 does allow for a waiver of the LEP based on three items that if you cannot meet it, you have to work with Evanson for the Evanson local database. You have to put notices in newspaper, and you also have to contact the union hall. That is something that Bullies and Andros did do on the other project, but on this specific project, the contractor did not meet any of those requirements. They indicate they're going to meet the LEP. They did not communicate with the city when they were, when they realized they were not going to. They didn't take any of the efforts to contact the local newspapers or the union, and therefore the penalty was assessed.
Good deal, Dave, thank you very much. I appreciate the diligence in answering the resident's question. Thank you very much. Thank, thank you. All right, seeing no more discussion on A one, this was moved and seconded. City clerk, could you take the role, please, on A one approval of the City of Evanson payroll and bills?
Yes, Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton? Alderman Ravel?
Aye.
And Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
All right, A one passes the Evanston City Council on a nine to zero vote. Alderman Sufferton, can you move A two?
Sure, I move, I'll separate. I, I move item eight here, which is sole source purchase of Panasonic ToughBooks for police department vehicles from CDS Office Technologies. Staff recommend city council approve the sole source purchase of 40 FZ55 Panasonic ToughBook laptops from CDS Office Technologies for under $36,400 or $27,280 a year over five years. Also, the city will have a $1 mile at the end of the term. The equipment will replace Panasonic ToughBooks and Evanston Police Patrol vehicles that have reached the manufacturer's end of serviceable life. Funding will be from the Police Department, Patrol Operations, Minor Tools, and Equipment account with a 2021 budget of $39,216 and available year-to-date balance of $35,438. For action.
Is there a second? Okay, so this is moved and seconded. Alderman Nguyen?
Aye. Mr. Mayor, I wanted to ask, we had someone during public comment who was highly critical of our, of this purchase and seemed to indicate that the city was not getting a good deal. So I'd like to have the staff explain why this actually makes sense and why the person who raised the questions, I don't know whether the staff was on during public comment and overheard them, I think the essence of the comments were that we were buying something that was old already, and then we were going to pay for it and waste our money to the tune of, I think it was about $50,000. I may be, I may be getting that summary wrong, but I'd like to have the staff explain this purchase a little bit more.
Sure, Mr. Mayor, did you want me to weigh in?
Yes, go ahead, Luke Stone.
Luke, were you going to listen to the criticism?
I did hear it, and Chief Cook is also here, Dimitri Shub from IT is also here as well. So good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Clerk Reed, City Manager Storey. My name is Luke Stone, Interim Director of Administrative Services. Myself and Dimitri, Dan Corcoran of IT, in consultation with the Police Department, put together this project. As many of you know, the ToughBooks that are operating in our patrol vehicles are very old now, they are about six years old. They're running on Windows 7 operating system, which is no longer supported by Microsoft for over a year now. They are out of warranty, and we are looking to upgrade the ToughBooks that are in our patrol vehicles. It's been six years since we've made a purchase. This particular purchase is about $200,000 less than the last time we came to council in 2015. Pricing has fallen, we're buying fewer devices, we're being a little bit smarter about how we handle the hardware in the actual vehicles as far as the equipment to support the ToughBooks. We have already used grant money to purchase three of these newer models, and they already are in production and being used by police, and they are working well. And there was a comment about, two comments about the chip processor that we're only moving forward two years, and that's not correct, we're actually moving forward about four and a half years from moving from a processor from January 2015 to the second quarter of 2019. And that's typical for CDS Panasonic ToughBooks. And then there was also a question about the driver and GPS compatibility. That was only one factor in our decision to go forward in moving forward with this purchase. I want to defer to Chief Cook and Dimitri on my team in case they have any additional comments they'd like to offer.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Clerk Reed, City Manager Storey. What I'd like to say is the computer is a critical part of our communications process. We have police radios, but that's just voice-to-voice communications. Our police computers, they allow us to connect with the Secretary of State, the FBI, the Leaks, the law enforcement automated data system, state police, and internally, in terms of forwarding communications, that's critical. We also write our police reports, officers write in-car reports now that are computer-based, and we also utilize these computers to communicate with other departments. Now, when Evanston cost out these same computers, the predecessor models in 2015, they spent a total of $323,151. And at that, at that time, we purchased 54 of those computers. To date, we costing out at $136,400. The gentleman earlier said that the computers cost $3,400. Each individual unit in this purchase costs $2,685 times 40, comes out to $107,400. And we also get the three-year warranty on all of these computers, you know, fixing these computers can be costly. It's tight in a police car, so these ToughBooks are ruggedized for a reason because they get banged into, you know, we have people in the car. So it gets to be costly in terms of managing these computers without warranty. So at $586 for each warranty on each computer, you know, it comes out to $23,440 for the 40 computers. And then we got the RAM upgrade, and that turns out to be $5,560. And that gives $136,400. This is a critical piece of equipment that we utilize year-round, 24/7, and it's time to purchase new ones. It's for the safety of the public as well as the safety of the police officers. We receive Amber Alerts, Wanted Person Alerts, Stolen Vehicle Alerts, you name it, it comes over that computer. And I appreciate you all for allowing me the opportunity to address this very important situation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Nguyen. Any other questions or comments?
Dimitri Shub, Chief Information Security Officer with the City of Evanston, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, City Manager Storey, Clerk Reed. I just wanted to add on to Chief Cook's comments about the importance of these pieces of equipment for daily police operations. I also just want to speak to the importance of maintaining a relatively high degree of health from a, from a cybersecurity perspective. It is because of the interconnected nature of all of the devices on our network, your overall cybersecurity posture is only as strong as your weakest links. And continuing to operate legacy hardware on legacy operating systems prevents, presents a significant risk to the organization. And given that the city performs so many important tasks for our constituents, for our citizens, keeping all of our network safe is, is important, really across the board. So investing into this hardware refresh isn't just about maintaining good, good running hardware for day-to-day operations, but it really does play into the, the health of the overall organization from a cybersecurity perspective, and particularly in today's climate where so many cities, municipalities, counties, even organizations at the federal level are at risk of cyber attack and having cyber incidents. This is, this is an investment that is long overdue. Thank you.
Thank you, Dimitri.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, seeing no further questions or, or discussion. We had a motion to move and a second, A two, the sole source purchase of the Panasonic ToughBooks for police department vehicles from CDS Office Technologies. Clerk Reed, could you please take the role?
I, I'm sorry, I'm having an issue with my neighbors and Chief Cook. If you want to send someone to 325 Custer, I'd hate if we have the alternative system in place, please send them, but, you know, my neighbors are having a huge issue now, so apologies. Anyhow.
Okay, are you okay to do the role? I can have somebody else.
I am, I'm fine in my apartment, but as you can hear, out in the hallway. Jesus, and I feel like I have to intervene. Alderman, can someone call the role for me, please?
We can, we can do that, Clerk Reed. Be safe. Ms. Storey, can you or one of your staff call the role, please?
Sure, we're beginning with Alderman Fleming.
Fleming tonight.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton? Alderman Ravel?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
All right, and in nine to zero vote, the Evanston City Council passes A two, the sole source purchase of Panasonic ToughBooks for the Police Department vehicles from CDS Office Technologies. Alderman Sufferton, can you move A six?
Sure, I move item A six, which is ordinance 14021 amending city code section 7-12-4-2 relating to the installation and maintenance of service pipe from tap to fixtures. The city manager recommends city council adopt the ordinance 14-0-21 amending code section 7-12-4-2 relating to the installation, maintenance of service pipe from tap to fixtures. City manager requests suspension of the rules for introduction and action of this item at the city council meeting March 8, 2021. This is for introduction and action.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right.
I am available.
So, okay, thank you, Clerk Reed. So this is open for discussion, this item A six right now?
And my understanding is Alderman Rainey wanted to pull this for increased visibility and discussion?
I, I didn't necessarily want to pull it, I thought our staff was going to give the report on this.
Oh, okay, Dave, go to work, buddy.
Good evening, Dave Stomack, Public Works Director. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to discuss this again. This proposed ordinance modifies some of the current code. We currently do lend out money to homeowners that are interested, that are on the streets in which we're replacing water main, so that they can replace their portion of the lead service line in conjunction with that. This ordinance modifies how much we are willing to loan out. Previously, it was $4,800, and now it's the full amount of the plumbing costs do that. We're also waiting the $50 registration fee or application fee, and we're extending the time that you can take to repay your loan, and that we will continue to collect it back at $100 a month that shows up as a $200 amount on your water bill. The other thing that we're doing is that we're proposing that we would actually provide a grant for properties that are in a census block or primary residential neighborhood where 51% or more of the residents have incomes that are, that do not exceed 80% of the area of median income. For the proposed work that's in 2021, that would be the water main installation on Foster Avenue between Emerson Street and Hartry Avenue. This ordinance, I perceive, will be more or less the stopgap measure for 2021 water main only. I perceive that in 2022, we will work the replacement of the lead service lines right into our water main contract and have the contractor that is installing the water main replace the lead service all the way through the residential homes up to the meter with the permission of the homeowner, of course, otherwise they can leave out of it. We don't have time to have all that engineering completed before the water main is installed in '21. So this is what we thought would be the most equitable to be, get this work accomplished in 2021. To be able to do this work in 2022 and make it part of our water main project, I perceive I'll be coming back to you with the recommendation that we hire a consultant to do a water and sewer cost of service and rate study because this project will add about, replacing the lead pipes will add about $1,500 to our water main work. We have to figure out how we're going to afford that and what our water rates would be to do that. And we also need to finish our work on what is considered to be an affordable rate so that when we do raise the rates, we don't make it aggressive and make it a flat rate to all residents because as we know, then economically disadvantaged would pay a larger portion of their wages towards the water and sewer bill, which is not appropriate either. So staff just didn't have the time to get all this work completed to have that type of work completed in the 2021 water main project, and we thought that this would be the best route to take for this year to get these water mains accomplished and replace the lead service pipes as much as possible.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions for Director Stoneback or any comments? All right, seeing none because we are suspending the rules for introduction and action. I think I need a motion to do that first.
I move to suspend the rules to allow us to introduce and take action tonight.
Second.
I can.
Okay, and this is on item A6, seeing no discussion. City Clerk, could you take the roll on suspending this rule?
Yes, Alderman Fleming. Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton.
Aye.
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman, and that's it.
All right, thank you, Clerk. So the City Council, on a nine-to-zero vote, agreed to suspend the rules to allow A6, ordinance 14-0-21, amending City Code Section 7-12-4-2 relating to the installation and maintenance of service pipes from tap to fixture to allow this for introduction and action tonight. The item has been moved and seconded, seeing no conversation. City Clerk, could you please take the roll on A6?
Sorry, calling the roll, sorry, guys. Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton?
Aye.
Alderman Revelle?
Aye.
And Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
All right, so on a nine-to-zero vote, A6 passes the Evanston City Council. We're now going to move to the last item that was removed from the consent agenda, and that is P3. I'm going to ask Alderman Fisk, as the Chair of Planning and Development, if she will move P3.
Yes, P3 is ordinance 13021, a zoning text amendment to permit the establishment and regulation of efficiency homes, and this is on for action.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, this is open for discussion.
Yes, may I speak to that?
Alderman Fisk?
Yep.
Yes, I wanted to take this off the agenda because I think we need to do a little bit more work on it. The part of the Plan Commission meeting where the commissioners were discussing this item, unfortunately, was not on the recording, and I did not realize at that time that this text amendment that apparently will affect the adjacent homeowners to the lots in question had not been notified. And I think that needs to happen because we are asking, we're giving the developers of these non-conforming parcels, or however we want to talk about them, these small parcels, some relief from side yard setbacks, and I think adjacent property owners need to know about that. So if the applicant, Mr. Gallimore, is correct that there are 36 of these parcels in the city, that means that there would be adjacent property owners, 72 adjacent property owners, and I just think we need to let them know because while there was a public hearing at the Plan Commission, it wasn't identified to these or noticed to these particular homeowners. So before somebody builds a, is permitted to build a small house three feet from the lot line, I think we need to let them know that. So I'm going to ask that we hold this tonight to our next meeting to give staff an opportunity to provide notice to these folks. And so I'm going to ask for a hold, and if I could get a second, I appreciate it.
Was there a second to that?
Second, I second.
All right, so Alderman Fisk has asked to hold it, seconded by Alderman Wynn. That will move P3 to the Monday, March 22 meeting. In the meantime, if proper notification or anything wasn't made, we'll work with the City Manager's Office and Community Development to do that. Okay?
Thank you.
All right, so P3 is held to March 23. Okay, we're now going to move to call the wards. So we will start with you, Alderman Fleming. Alderwoman Fleming?
Thank you. This Wednesday at 6:00 PM, we are going to have an environmental meeting on the ninth ward. There are several issues that have come up over the years, so we're going to have some residents and folks come and talk to us and help us kind of gather our thoughts and figure out our next step. So email one out. If you don't have it, feel free to email me, and I can get you the link for the Zoom.
Yeah, Alderman Fisk?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to thank everyone who came to my ward meeting last week and just remind folks that while we have lots of things to talk about, that the ward meetings and meetings on city and city facilities are not really permitted during the election cycle. And I just would ask everyone to please remember behavior and civility during this time. We have many, many important things to talk about, and it's hard to do that when people are shouting. So if everyone could be part of the conversation, that would be great. And I'll keep my fingers crossed for that, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I don't know how many of our residents have stuck around for this. I do have to take a moment just to address some issues and comments who we heard from our public regarding the reparations, and forgive me if I take a while to do this. I think it's important for our Black community as well as our white allies to understand that there's a difference between the local effort that we have to bring repair to our community. I think it's important that we understand the difference between the national movement of HB40 as it goes through Congress. The platform of our Evanston program is based on discrimination on the part of the city. The national program and efforts are based on slavery, Jim Crow, and systemic racism. It's important for our residents to understand that out of the $10 million that our City Council passed back in June, that only $400,000 has been budgeted in our 2021 budget. The three areas that we plan to address over the next several years while we build up, and that's just within the public fund, housing, down payment, repair, and what we hope to pass is tax abatement. The second area will focus on economic development and growing our Black businesses. It's amazing to me, and Alderman Simmons, I'm going to ask that you just calculate some numbers as I wrap up. Since July of 2019, how many community meetings have you hosted? The average number of Black residents that participated in those meetings? How many ward meetings have you hosted where reparations was a topic of the discussion? And how many average, you know, residents that you have in attendance? I know we've done at least two or three together, not to mention the ones that you have done across town. In addition to that, we've posted at least three town halls where we've had over 100 participants, not only from the city of Evanston, but also outside of our town. Alderman Simmons, I think you would probably know better along with our staff how many subcommittee meetings we've hosted, and we average anywhere from 30 to 50 participants on a monthly basis. As I sum up, I want to share that we've had many conversations within the community. I've received many emails. It's amazing to me that coming off of the introduction of HR40 as well as an amazing coverage that we received from ABC News, the soul of our nation, that there's still questions in terms of what we hope to achieve with our local efforts. I would direct our community and anyone who has specific questions to go to our City of Evanston website, where we have a page dedicated to the reparation efforts. I believe if you take the time to read it, it will provide you with the information that some have raised questions about. We receive emails and phone calls from residents all the time who are interested in staying in Evanston. We have residents who want to purchase homes in Evanston. We have residents that have asked for assistance to repair their homes and residents who also want tax abatement. We're just beginning to roll this out. And I'll end with this, I think we should all be suspect. Whenever you have a Black effort and you have Black people with Black allies attacking those efforts in the name of Black unity is something that I just can't get my head around. And I don't know if that's going to be an ethic complaint, but that's just a feeling that I communicate to our broader community. And since those of you, and I haven't figured out who this group is, I know that there's a Facebook page of maybe 200 people. I have also been informed that there are members of City Council that next week are planning to hold this, and I think that we all should just be aware of that. One person voted no, but the question will be out of all of you that I'm looking at, if there is an effort to hold this, I hope that that person at least has the decency to share that, whatever your reasons are, with either myself, Alderman Simmons, or Alderman Rainey. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Wynn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, no report.
Okay, Alderman Wilson?
No report.
Alderwoman Rue Simmons?
Thank you, Mayor Hagerty. Just want to remind everyone that we have our fifth ward meeting on Wednesday. We will talk about our proposed TIP that is really exciting, could provide great opportunity for us. And as always, we will receive updates on our reparation efforts. So just to add on to Alderman Braithwaite's comments, we had actually 15 meetings, public meetings, before we took this vote, which was in November of 2019 for reparation. So for those that are concerned about not having enough process and public process and inclusion, we're actually really excited that there is new interest in our reparation goals, and this provides an opportunity for us to have even more robust community progress or participation going forward. So in 2019, this was introduced actually in February to the Equity Empowerment Commission, and from that date until its passing in November, there were 15 meetings, including Equity Empowerment Commission meetings, Equity Empowerment Subcommittee meetings on reparations, community meetings on reparations to take feedback from the stakeholder community. All of it is very well documented, meeting minutes are online. You know we have a very transparent form of government. And in addition to that, we had later introductions from the commission to the City Council and at least two or three introductions and actions at City Council before 2019. And so fast forward to 2020, we've continued an extensive public process with subcommittee meetings, reparation meetings, initially being held twice a month. And then we had a COVID interruption, and then we resumed meeting faithfully monthly, all public, all with great community engagement, participation, public comment. In addition to that, as mentioned, we had town halls, one that had over 1,000 residents that participated, and we had others that included not only community stakeholders right here from Evanston, but national leaders, including Congresswoman Sheila Jackson Lee and Narcan and Cobra members that are national reparation leaders. So I just wanted to put that out there, but let everyone know we're excited that now there is interest and you can continue to join in the process. We're thinking about a process that would be, allow us to continue the work to include more community voices. That is a priority of ours on the subcommittee, and we look to introduce that. We have an exciting idea on how we can do that going forward. But again, this is only 4%, as Alderman Rainey reminded us, it's 4%. We still have $9,600,000 plus, 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 thanks to all the residents and businesses that have contributed to do more work if we should pass this on our next meeting. So I just wanted to put that out there, remind everyone, join us at the City Council at our ward meeting, and there I always share updates. Again, been to the second ward meeting, I've been to the seventh ward meeting, and all across the community to various organizations, institutions, small groups, churches, and so on. I share on my Facebook page and an Evanston reparation Facebook page as well. So I want to say that it is unfair to say that we haven't included the voices of the community, specifically the Black community, and we look forward to continuing the work. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you, Alderman. Alderman Sufferton?
Plan Commission Wednesday is going to talk about 2715 herd. So encourage all six ward residents interested in that project to attend that meeting.
Could you say what they're going to discuss again? I didn't catch that.
2715 herd.
2715, okay. All right, thank you. Alderman Revelle?
Yes, just to remind seventh ward residents that I am having a seventh ward meeting on Thursday, 7:00 PM. We're going to be talking about plans that are underway or possible for the space where the North Branch Library was, and we're also going to be talking about some potential new amenities for Independence Park. So everybody come and learn more on Thursday.
All right, thank you, Alderman Revelle, and Alderman Rainey?
Yes, in keeping with what Alderman Simmons was talking about regarding the money, there's, in addition to that, there's been talk that going forward, you cannot, you cannot project a $10 million budget because this, the cannabis industry, and I'm talking about reparations, the cannabis industry is a new industry and you can't rely on the money. Well, the cannabis industry is known as one of the most growth-active industries that has come along in a long time. So we're probably way underestimating the $10 million, but we're going to be very satisfied with that. Also, I want to talk about what's going on on Howard Street right now, the construction. For the last few years, we've been really looking forward to the renovation. For the last few years, we've been really looking forward to the renovation of Howard Street. It's going to be dug up and replaced from Target to Callan, and we were very excited about that, and for a while, we were getting really good updates. I drove down Asbury on Friday and made a turn east, and I was mortified by what I saw. Three, four lanes of traffic, all the parking, everything was barricaded with not any sign of any kind of construction going on. The entire weekend was a disaster. All the parking has been stripped in the retail commercial area of Howard Street. We had, you know, a grand opening at the Palm House event space. Our staff told us that there's nothing we can do, it's an IDOT project. I am, I can't tell you how disappointed I am in the lack of communications that we had and that our, our businesses had. And I, I am just putting it out there very publicly that, you know, the entire community, anybody who uses Howard Street, whether they're a businessperson, a customer, anybody, is being really, really victimized by this project. And our staff, our engineering staff, our economic development staff, our community development staff, our management staff has got to do something. We have to interact with IDOT. If we have to get in touch with our state reps, with the governor, I don't care who it is, we have to do something. This is the worst mess I have ever seen in all my years, and I know my term is short right now, but something has to be done to help the people out who have businesses on Howard Street, who just have to travel on Howard Street. So, sorry about that rant, but it's really important. Finally, my recusing myself from the Harley Clark vote tonight. I believe that was an illegal recusal. I should not have recused myself. I should have been made to vote. There was no reason for me to recuse myself legally. However, given Alderman Sufferton's protestation, I did not want in any way to tarnish the vote for Artist Book House. I, I very much support that, and I feared, given the intolerance of things these days out in, in political land in Evanston, I, I wanted, I, I so much support that, that I didn't want anything untoward to happen to that, to that selection. So for that reason, I chose to abstain, but there really was no reason. I mean, I, I wrote a $100 check to the, to the group that wanted to tear down Harley Clark, but since then, of course, many of you have written 100,000, tens of thousand dollar checks to Robert Crown, including myself, small amounts, and nobody's been challenged about that. So, you know, I, I, I think there was no reason for him to bring that up, but I, I know it's politics time, it's the silly season, and so I chose to abstain. But I, I regret that our legal department didn't do a little more research, because that, that ethics committee has been dissolved, and their, their statements are only advisory anyway. So I had no reason to, to recuse myself, but I did. Nobody can, she voted on, that doesn't count, so that's it.
Thank you, thank you, Alderman Rainey. And that concludes call of the wards. I'm going to ask if Alderman Wilson would read us into executive session?
Thank you. Pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, ILCS 120 slash 2A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding personnel. These agenda items are permitted subject to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. The exception is 5ILCS 120 slash 2A C1.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, city clerk, could you please take the roll to recess into executive session?
Yes. Alderman Fleming?
Hi.
Alderman Fisk?
Hi.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Hi.
Alderman Wynn?
Hi.
Alderman Wilson?
Hi.
Alderman Rue Simmons?
Hi.
Alderman Sufferton?
Hi.
Alderman Revelle?
Hi.
And Alderman Rainey?
Hi.
All right, so on a nine to zero vote, the Evanston City Council is going to recess into executive session. Thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening. We will return for our next city council meeting on Monday, March 22.